I'd like to call this city council meeting for Monday, July 6, 2020, to order. We'll start our council meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
face of America.
And to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Once again, good evening to all council members and folks watching. Ms. Christensen, if we could start the meeting with a roll call, please.
Sure thing. Councilmember Bloga.
Present.
Mayor Bussey.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Coulter.
Present.
Councilmember Loman.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
And Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Let the record show that all seven members of the Bloomington City Council are available either in person or via WebEx. Next up on our agenda is the approval of the agenda, item number four. I did not see any changes to the agenda. If anybody had any, now would be the time to bring them up. Or short of that, I'd look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So move Councilmember Loman.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman and a second by Councilmember Carter to approve tonight's agenda. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Bloga.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0, so we have an agenda for this evening. Next up on our agenda is our, item number five, our introductory items. And item 5.1 is our COVID-19 organizational and public health update. As he has been since March, Dr. Nick Kelly from our Department of Public Health is going to be providing us an update. Dr. Kelly, good evening and welcome. Thanks for being here this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As of this afternoon, there are 782 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Bloomington. We've lost 38 of our neighbors to this disease and 79 have been hospitalized. Bloomington continues to be in a steady state with cases. Things are not getting better or worse. One thing that has changed is who is getting sick. The mean age of case in Bloomington continues to drop as we've seen a significant increase in cases in our young adult age group. In July, the mean age of case is 30, while this is a big change from the age of 59 in April. While young adult age group may be less likely to develop a severe illness, they can easily transmit COVID-19 to their loved ones that have high-risk conditions. As we continue to learn to live with COVID-19, we are watching other states see explosive outbreaks. It is a good reminder of how quickly things can change. We currently do not see the indicators of concern in Minnesota or Bloomington at this time. Following the guidance from MDH and the governor's office, we'll continue to help Minnesotans live with COVID-19 in the coming months. This is a shared responsibility that all of us must take part in. The last few months, we've learned a lot about COVID-19. I wanted to share a high level of summary of some of the things we've learned and how that's impacted our public health actions. With regard to transmission of COVID-19, the evidence continues to accumulate that COVID-19 is being transmitted primarily by droplet. Droplet are the things that you see when somebody's talking or animated that is kind of sprayed out of your mouth, that mist of the large pieces of saliva that are falling out of your nose and mouth. Sometimes you see that in concerts or theaters where singers in the first couple of rows may get a little wet. That's what we think about for droplet transmission. It's that close proximity, typically around six feet, where things are coming out. We know that what's expelled out of your mouth is not uniform. And so while droplet is focused on the large droplets that are coming out, there are small droplets that also come out. And so in the public health medical world, we often think about two types of respiratory transmission, droplet or airborne. And unfortunately, we've made it a dichotomy that either it's droplet or airborne, when in reality, like many things in life, there's a continuum. And so for COVID, we see the vast majority of the evidence is it is droplet. We do see situations where there is some airborne or aerosol transmission, which are the really small particles that move a little bit more freely in the environment than the large droplets that fall out with gravity. We see these in situations where there's been prolonged, close confined contact in spaces with poor airflow. So a classic example of this are the outbreaks that we've seen around the world in nightclubs, bars, and in some other venues like that. We also see upwards of 40% of transmission of COVID-19 to another person occurring before that person develops symptoms or that person never actually has symptoms. This highlights the importance of maintaining that physical distance to reduce your likelihood of transmission to others. We still need that physical distance as part of that layered level of protection. And wearing a cloth face covering can add some additional protection that way. We think it does play a role in reducing spread. We also don't see much evidence in the last couple of months showing that there's much impact from COVID transmission from fumite or contact. And so that was initial, an early concern. That's been largely shown to not happen for our majority of transmission cases. While we want everybody to be washing their hands and cleaning materials because there's many other infectious diseases out there that are impacted by those activities and you can reduce your risk of those, we don't see it playing a major role for COVID. When we look at clinical outcomes, the medical community is learning more and more every day of how to take care of patients. There's been a huge amount of evidence that's been accumulated as we're treating patients in intensive care units all over the world. And they're learning how to provide an amazing level of supportive care and identifying a few therapeutic options. Those at high risk have changed a little bit since the start of this pandemic. They include older adults. We know that the risk of a severe outcome of COVID increases with age. People with chronic kidney disease, COPD, organ transplant recipients with weakened immune systems, individuals that are obese, individuals with heart conditions, sickle cell disease, or type 2 diabetes. While we still don't understand why some individuals that have no symptoms and others develop severe illness with the same risk factors. So you could have a young adult has no symptoms and a young adult that ends up in the ICU with no risk factors. We still don't understand why that happens, and thankfully, that is still relatively rare. The best estimate we have for the case fatality rate for COVID-19 is about 1%. When you look at the data and you adjust it for cases missed due to mild or asymptomatic symptoms. And it's important to remember that when we're talking about these clinical impacts, we see a disproportionate impact on these clinical outcomes and especially severe disease and death in our BIPOC community. On the vaccine side, we have well over 100 vaccines in clinical development. The development timeline has been sped up by the federal government backing multiple vaccines at the same time. A normal clinical pathway is you go from phase one, which is really, how do you figure out how much of a dose of the vaccine to give to people? And you give it to a really small number just to see what generates the best immune response. Phase two is really assessing safety of that response in a larger group of people. And then phase three is, does it work? And it's in even a larger group to assess safety. Normally, those things happen sequentially with many months between each other. And so it often takes years to develop a vaccine. Because this pandemic is requiring amazing levels of reaction at the global level, the federal government has basically put their money in place of time. And so the vaccine is being developed at a much faster rate, but none of the steps are being forgotten. And so this vaccine will be incredibly safe, but instead of waiting months between phases of the trial and waiting to find out which vaccine performs the best in phase two, they're going to start phase three trials with multiple vaccines at the same time. And that's going to cut months off the timeline, and they're already preparing manufacturing to produce vaccines, not knowing which one will work. And so that is what's going to get us a vaccine sometime likely in early 2021. It is going to be a scarce resource. And so there's planning occurring right now to how that vaccine will be allocated across the country. We're monitoring that work and working with the state health department on those allocation strategies. But we, if things continue to go well with these vaccine trials, we will likely see some magnitude of vaccine in the early part of 2021. As far as public health actions, one of the things we've been focused on is staying on top of what's happening around the world. So we're monitoring COVID situations going on around the world, the nation, the state, regional and local levels so that we're making sure that we're providing the best input and feedback to the city decision makers and our policymakers. We're providing accurate and timely communication, outreach information, and support for internal and external partners and audiences. We're doing an awful lot of communication, and with our focus on equity, most of that communication is happening in other languages, and resources are being provided to take care of our BIPOC community, work with our long-term care facilities, and several multi-unit housing complexes that serve our older adults. We're providing subject matter expertise and support to city leadership, community partners, and long-term care facilities. We have staff that have been part of the testing program, working with the National Guard and long-term care facilities here in Bloomington, doing some amazing work with testing. And then we're doing a lot of contact tracing. We've done close to 400 case investigations for individuals in Bloomington or dying in Richfield, and then providing essential services for individuals that need that to maintain their isolation and quarantine status. And then we're doing a lot of planning. A lot of that planning right now is focused on the fall and the winter. But we're also planning for, as things change with this virus, how are we going to respond to best support our community with making strong public health decisions? That was my update for you guys tonight. I wanted to kind of help understand what's going on with COVID to set a little bit more of a foundation because it's been a little while since we provided an update about what we've learned and how things have changed with COVID.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Council, questions for Dr. Kelly on his latest update? I see Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Kelly, for the update and for all the work that you're doing and all the work that your staff are involved in with keeping us up to speed and making sure that we're doing everything that we can as a community to protect people from COVID-19. So based on everything you just said, especially in particular around the transmission of COVID via droplet and the effectiveness that we are seeing from cloth mask wearing, we are, we have, I mean, I guess I can only speak for myself, but I have gotten some communications from residents who are asking us to consider a universal masking policy for indoor public places. And we are also seeing other communities in Minnesota considering those. And so I am wondering, and actually, I guess maybe it would be more of a request that we have this conversation as a council and that we do bring it to a vote because I do think it's something that's incredibly important as we're considering the public health benefits, the protective factor it could have in terms of preventing the spread of COVID-19 and saving lives. And then I also think about the economic impact. You know, a lot of states that have opened up and who have seen these surges in cases and have then had to shut down are now passing masking policies. And so, you know, I think about what we've already been through as a city, the economic impact, not just to our business community, but to Bloomington, the city of Bloomington. And I think if there are simple, easy, inexpensive, and minimally invasive things that we could be doing as a council and as a community, it seems to make sense, right, if this could help prevent another shutdown and if it could help save lives. And so I just want to put that out there. I guess it's a question to get your reaction as a public health expert. And then also a request of my colleagues here on council to have this conversation.
Dr. Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, you're correct. Mask, cloth mask mandates have become a very hot topic in public health. What we've seen in the literature is a proliferation of papers highlighting the potential value or not value. And many of them are struggling to provide clarity. And so what we see often, as you said, we're seeing states that had explosive growth put mandates in after they see that explosive growth, and oftentimes, that is after they've peaked. And so as they're on the backside of their peak of infection, a mask mandate typically comes into place. And it's hard to tease out whether or not other mitigating factors in addition to the cloth masks had that impact. But knowing that the masks were in place after the peak and you had a high compliance rate initially, it makes it really challenging to see where it comes down from a public health intervention strategy. It's further complicated by the fact that most states, while they have an enforcement mechanism in their mandate, are intentionally not enforcing the mandate. And so it raises a policy conundrum where you have a mandate, a law, so to speak, telling people they must do something and an intentional effort to not enforce it. That raises the policy question of how that's different than a strong recommendation, which is what we currently have. We've had a strong precedent so far of following the guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health and the CDC, which both provide a strong recommendation, but are not urging that mandate. And so it's, it gets into a little bit more of a challenge and a conundrum on that side because the thinking in the public health world is that they do provide some benefit. We're not able to quantify that at this point. It seems likely that if it's mostly that droplet, it would have benefit. But we see a wide variety of the quality. And my personal observations are when I'm out in the community and visiting our local businesses is it appears that people that are wearing cloth masks, in some cases feel that they're a little bit more protected than others and are willing to take more risky behavior. And we see individuals that get infected with COVID that are wearing cloth masks and think that, oh, this was protecting me. It really is designed to minimize your ability to spread it to others. But the first thing we're supposed to be doing to minimize the spread to others is not being within six feet of each other and maintaining that social distance. And, you know, when you get into those situations where you're in a crowd, where you're in prolonged contact in an environment where it's kind of closed airspace and there's not good circulation, you're going to see transmission, whether or not you're wearing a cloth face covering or not. And that's where we're seeing more and more countries around the world trying to minimize people being in those situations. We've seen those nightclubs, the bars around the world see these kind of issues where somebody's sitting in a place for an hour or two or in close proximity to a bunch of other people. And it doesn't, a cloth face mask is not going to protect you and won't have much protection for other people. So it's that conundrum. We don't have the evidence base that we would like to see on the public health side to mandate. Because on the public health side, when we look at a mandate, we look at that the same way we would look at vaccines. And so we're pretty comfortable saying you can't go to school because you don't have this vaccine and you're a risk of spreading an infectious disease. The evidence base for that is substantial. The evidence base for the cloth face coverings is it seems to make sense. And it appears that it does have some impact, but we can't quantify it. And we do see situations where you have communities that have widespread masking or a mask mandate, and their case counts continue to rise and go up. And you see, we look at Southeast Asia where we have pretty universal masking, and we still see clusters and cases, things emerging there. It's not a panacea for controlling this. It's one of the things we think is, should be recommended and encouraged as part of a layered approach. A potential way to think about that is how do you encourage widespread usage of something? And oftentimes, you look at options for how do you provide it at a lower cost or freely available? How do you reduce the burden to have people access things so that they're more willing to use it without more of the carrot versus the stick approach? But if the mandate's not enforced, you lose the stick mechanism.
Councilmember Carter, a follow-up?
Yeah, I do appreciate that. I think I, you know, as somebody with a public health background, I have felt that conundrum myself in looking at the evidence and the research and hearing what experts and agencies are saying. And so I do appreciate the very challenging position that we find ourselves in. And so, but I still would like to hear from other council members to see if there is interest in moving forward this conversation in terms of mandatory indoor masking policy for Bloomington. You know, I do have my own personal anecdotal experiences where I feel like most places I go, I feel like most people are wearing masks inside. But I've also had experiences where I'm shocked when people aren't, you know? And so I guess I just feel like it's, I really appreciate what you're saying, and I really value it, and I understand. And so I guess I would just like to hear from other council members. And I don't know if now is the time or some other point, but I think it's an important conversation, especially with the increased interest and requests coming from residents.
I would agree with you, Councilmember Carter. I've received a number of emails and phone calls myself as well. From a process standpoint, because our emergency declaration, our local emergency declaration has lapsed. We let that lapse at the end of last month. I don't have the power to unilaterally do a mayoral declaration requiring masks, which is I think what they did in the city of Edina very recently. So we don't have that now. So I think the appropriate way to go about this would be for you to, let's put a pin in this and bring this up in item 9.4, our city council policy and issue update. We can have the discussion then as a council. If there are enough council members who would like to move forward with this, then we can do this properly. And granted, it's going to add some time to it, but we'll have the time to properly post this, to properly frame it up as we want to frame it and get the community discussion going that we want going and be able to make the decision based on it then. So if that would be okay with you, if we could follow that path, I think that would be the best way to go. Very good. Additional questions for Dr. Kelly? All right, seeing none. Dr. Kelly, thank you very much once again for the update, very informative as always. And appreciate your time and appreciate the information you're able to provide. Thanks so very much. Next, we can move to item 5.2 on our agenda, which is an update on our Community Budget Advisory Committee. The co-chair of our CBAC, Mr. Steve Peterson, is with us here this evening to provide an update. I know that the Budget Advisory Committee met three times in June, and they've got a pretty aggressive work plan scheduled for the rest of the summer and into the fall. And Mr. Peterson, if, good evening, welcome. Thanks for being here this evening. And if you could lead us through, I think you've got a presentation as well, do you not?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a presentation. Everybody hearing me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so just three slides today. So again, I'm Steve Peterson. I am the co-chair of the Community Budget Advisory Committee. Let's see here. So you should see the shared presentation on the screen.
We have it on the screen, and now it is going out. Very good. Thanks.
Thank you. So just three slides today. Wanted to bring you up to date on the workings of the committee. It's a nine-member committee. You recently appointed them. Name's listed over on the left. I'm the co-chair along with former mayor Neil Peterson. In June, we focused on kind of three areas. One is refining the charter for the committee, kind of setting the rules of the road. Also spent two meetings kind of going into detail on budget, what I call budget 101.1 and 101.2. And then in the last meeting on the 24th, we talked about assessing. Talked about kind of how we might think about the racial equity dimension to the decisions that we're making. And finally, we talked about local socioeconomic indicators, just so that folks were completely up to speed on what the current situation was in the community around the economics of the community. We've made three decisions so far. One is we're, the committee's really interested in making decisions on a consensus basis. So we talked about the process of going through and voting on like 100 or 200 things and decided that that wasn't the approach we wanted to take. So what we're going to do is we're going to build our decisions by going down a consensus path. It's a little bit more challenging because we'll have to talk more about it. And I know I've talked to some council members about whether we're going to be able to make every decision by consensus. We'd like to, but I think that the group also agreed that there was a backup where we would vote if we were going to get consensus on things. That's one decision. The second one is we're really focused on funds that have significant tax support. And as you're aware, the two tax sources that are really most impacted by the pandemic are the property tax and the liquor and lodging tax. And so the five funds that are listed there, under recreational facilities, there's a couple of funds underneath there. I didn't list them out. But those are, those are the funds and fund areas that we're going to be focusing on. Those are the funds that really have significant taxpayer support to them. So we're not paying, we're not paying very much attention, for example, to utility funds because they're largely kind of fee-for-charge funds and the tax support not a meaningful kind of source of support inside those funds. The other thing that we did discuss is that as part of the presentation on the property tax, property valuation that is currently occurring and will be set for January of 2021, which impacts property taxes that are paid in 2022, we are going to look at kind of where that valuation is ending up as an input to setting a combination of the levy recommendation and the budget recommendations. And the reason that we're doing that, it may make sense for us to have some resources that are collected next year in 2021 be available in 2022 to be able to kind of smooth any sort of impacts of the change in property valuation. The assessor came and talked quite a bit about how the, particularly in the area of hotel properties, commercial property, those areas in particular are pretty strongly impacted by the pandemic. And so we want to kind of see where that is going so that we can decide whether there's an appropriate amount of money to set aside with respect to them. And a third slide here, remaining work. So we're going to do monthly status reports to the council. We intend to do community engagement in August, September, and October. Then there's three things that are really deliverables to the council that we're talking about in front of this group. Number one is the preliminary levy recommendation, which is due at the end of August. Number two is bringing forward some revenue scenarios for the council to consider in September because kind of getting some consensus on what the set of revenue scenarios does allows us to complete work on the budget scenarios, which we intend to deliver in early November. And what that does is that dovetails with the council's normal consideration in September of the preliminary levy and in early December of setting the final levy and the budget for the city. For people who are watching, you can go to that URL, blm.cbcac, which is the webpage of the committee. Our meetings are broadcast live. They're on Wednesday nights at 6:30, most Wednesday nights. You can also sign up for email updates. And then there's a pretty good collection of all of the information that we've gotten so far in the three meetings that we've had. So at this point, if I would stand for any questions that folks might have about what we're up to and kind of what we plan to deliver over the next couple of months.
Council, any questions of Mr. Peterson this evening? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Peterson, for your leadership on the committee. This is great to have kind of another set of eyes on the challenges we have coming up. So you'd mentioned kind of using a consensus approach, which I'm assuming will get us to these three to four budget scenarios. Are you anticipating that the committee is going to be kind of pointing towards one of those over others as saying this is the direction we would want ahead? Or once you arrive at the three to four, that'll be the final product?
We haven't, we haven't discussed picking a particular one as our favorite. So I think that so far, and I think that could change, that the council wanted us to pick something as a preferred alternative. wanted us to pick something as a as a preferred alternative, we could certainly do that. I think our intent right now is to have scenarios that are a couple of different sizes from resources perspective, and then say, if you kind of choose this set of resources, then this is the sort of services we think makes sense at that resource level. I think that's, that's what our intent is right now, as in further direction.
Excellent, thanks.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Peterson, and everybody on the committee for all of the time and energy you are spending on this effort that's so critically important for us. And so, I just got a quick question. Have you had any conversations around what the community engagement piece of this will look like?
We have not had discussions specifically about that. I think our intent is in July to work out what our plans are around the specific engagement. But we want to make sure that we're out gathering feedback from folks who are ready to work there because I think one of the important functions of the committee is really to be the kind of full hearings on what we're doing. So if the council has the benefit of the feedback that we have, so we don't want to do, we don't want to deliver something to the council in like the November timeframe that people haven't heard before and they are coming to the council and reacting to it for the first time. Then I think that there's got to be a feedback loop that's incorporated prior to it coming, or we're not really achieving the goal that we wanted to have with the committee.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Councilmember Carter kind of stole my question there. But I I guess I just want to, and I know, obviously, you know this as well, but I want to reinforce how important that a variety of community engagement techniques are used that, you know, I've said many times that budget decisions are policy decisions and how we essentially, how we express our values as a community. So making sure that that we're, we're getting sort of a variety of information that we're hearing in a variety of different capacities, a variety of different ways from the community about what our values are. So I just want to be clear here that, you know, we're not talking, you know, the nine of you or how, or whatever it is, sitting behind a podium and, okay, you come up and tell us what you think, next person comes up and does the same thing, so.
Yeah. In fact, I think, and that's a really good, that's a really good piece of input, Councilmember Coulter, that, I think actually, it's unlikely that we're actually going to have the real podium with people kind of orbiting through that. And so, we, some of the things that we've talked about, that that co-chair Peterson and I have talked about with the staff have been like poster sessions and dot exercises and things like that, maybe that we do something at farmer's market where as people come through, we ask them questions and gather some of those kinds of things where we can do that in a, in a safe way, but really try to have things set up so that we're gathering input from a variety of perspectives and make sure that that's incorporated.
And I will say, Mr. Peterson, peeking ahead at your agenda for Wednesday night, I think the discussion on community engagement methods and timing and so on, I believe, is part of that agenda for Wednesday night.
Yeah, exactly right.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Peterson, for being with us and sharing this information. I just have one quick follow up on what you had said regarding having different scenarios based on different resource levels. And if you've given any consideration or if there might be an opportunity at a certain amount of resources to look at options within that, within that, you know, just as an idea or thought of, you know, you could invest more into community amenities, but that wouldn't leave as much for sustainability, kind of trying to put some scenarios at those resource levels or things for us to think about and consider in the final decision-making. I hope that makes sense, but just a, I guess a question and or suggestion.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Nelson, that's a, that's a good question. The one approach that we could take, and we'd have to go, you know, we, I'd want to hear the council's feedback on it and then go back to the committee and talk too, is that we could come with a set of resource scenarios and have the council select a resource scenario, and then we could build a couple of budget scenarios underneath that as an option. I think that for, you know, our intent around the budget scenarios was effectively that they would be nesting budget scenarios so that the least expensive one would would be, you know, everything in that would be in the second least expensive one, and then everything in that would be in the third least expensive one because making decisions around that is the most straightforward. But if instead we were kind of picking a resources scenario first, and then we said we want you to, you know, prepare a couple of different options underneath that, we could certainly go down that path if it was the consensus of folks to do that.
Council, additional questions? If not, Mr. Peterson, I know we're going to see you again soon. Do you know when the, your next update to the, to the council will be?
I think we haven't picked a date, I'm looking at the manager to see if he looks up here and has an ID on it. But I think what we want to do is we want to come back probably right at the beginning of August again, and be on our, have a monthly cadence of these presentations. So we'll, we'll be back at the beginning of August to talk about what we're up to, and then at the end of August, we'll be back to talk about the preliminary levy recommendation. That may also tick the box for early September, depending on where we're at on reporting or not. So may, we'll be back every month, it may not be exactly at a monthly.
Got it. Thank you. Council, last call for questions? If not, we'll say thank you to Mr. Peterson and thanks to all members of the Community Budget Advisory Committee, and keep up the good work, we appreciate it.
Thanks for your time to me.
We can move on now to item six on our agenda, which is our consent agenda. Councilmember Nelson has the consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to apologize to my colleagues for not reaching out earlier today to see if there are any holds, so, but I will ask at this time if anybody has anything to hold. I don't hear anything, so with that, I will move items six one through six eight.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent business as stated. I will state that the agenda was published before the August 31st date was added, I'm talking item six point, what is it, six point six?
Eight.
The, the updated council calendar. The agenda was published before the August 31st date was added to the PDF, so the PDF wasn't updated. It will be updated soon after this evening, after we approve the, the agenda, approve the updated schedule. So if anybody has questions on that. So we have a motion and a second to adopt the consent business as stated. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Logue?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Next up is item number seven, our public comment period. And our first item here is item seven point one, a response to prior meeting's public comments. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. At our last meeting on June 22nd, we had a number of participants in public comment. Most of them made comments to the council without asking for specific follow-up information. Of those, we had four callers who indicated they were supporters for ranked choice voting. We had a caller, Ms. Garbina, wanting the council to work with residents for a charter change related to parks. Ms. Moros asked a question of council related to crime and violence and issues related to police reform. And then Mr. Nick Blanch had a number of questions that he asked for specific response to. One was regarding the public health funding related to Hennepin County. On that point, there is no update with new information since last staff has reported to the city council or responded to previous questions from Mr. Blanch. Mr. Blanch had previously submitted suggestions to the city council related to budget actions, especially pertaining to city staff to manage through the pandemic. And at the June 22nd public, 22nd public comment indicated concern that the response to his previous comments made the suggestion that all of our city staff were union employees and we couldn't take those actions unilaterally. So he asked, he indicated that that was not the case, and I wanted to follow up and indicate that he is correct. We have 580 authorized full-time positions in our current year budget. Of those 188 of those members, 32% are actually members of a collective bargaining unit. Those staff are in the police department, where all of our dispatchers, all of our patrol officers, most of our supervisors, with the exception of senior command staff, as well as all of our assistant city attorneys, and then most of our non-supervisory staff in the community development department are members of collective bargaining units. And then one of the last comments that Mr. Blanch made had to do with the recent peaceful protests that we have been seeing around the community and questioning whether groups or individuals organizing those had pulled permits. The, the fact is that over the course of the last month or six weeks or so, we have been tracking the numerous social media postings that have organized peaceful protests, where we can identify an organizer, either an individual or a group, our staff has been reaching out to them to understand what their objectives are, if they are going to stay in one location or if they're going to be moving as part of their gathering, and working to ensure that there can be a safe way for them to demonstrate their First Amendment rights and make sure that we can keep the community safe around them. So safety of both our peaceful protesters and also the safety of community members. When the opportunity has presented itself, our, our staff has shared with them the city's requirement for assembly permit. And I can say that in all of these circumstances, I believe that a permit has not been pulled. The reason that we have permits for gathering such as this, well, not such as this, the reason that we have permits for assembly is often those permits have things like food and music, a lot of traffic and parking issues. So there are many other issues related to those types of permits. In this case, there's primarily an assembly of people for a protected speech activity. There's a very high threshold for our ability to require or limit that activity by utilization of a permit. And I would say that if you look around the country at cities where there are peaceful protests occurring, I'm hard pressed to find cities that are enforcing the permit requirement. And I've talked to my colleagues around here in the Twin Cities, and to my knowledge, cities besides Bloomington also are sharing the information about what they would like to see in assembly, but that a permit is not something that they are enforcing at this time. I think that's the reasonable approach, is maybe the city attorney, if anybody has a question about, she can opine what those severe thresholds are when it comes to the First Amendment. But at this point in time, Mr. Mayor and council members, our staff continues to try to work with organizers to the extent that we can, and they are interested in working with us to ensure safety and sharing with them the information that a permit is required for certain activities and asking them to do that.
Very good. Anyone with follow-up questions to any of those comments? If not, we can move on to item seven point two, our public comment period. That is a 20-minute period where the members of the public are welcome to address the city council on issues not on tonight's agenda. As always, folks will be limited to five minutes, and I think I heard a comment last time that people were asking about the clock to be shown or their, their timing. Just from a technology standpoint, I don't think we're able to do that. I would strongly encourage you to time yourself at home if you're on the phone and calling in. If it would be helpful, I'd give a 30-second notice also, but I, I don't want to interrupt what people are saying. So I do have, I do keep track of the, the time on my phone, so I do know when we're pushing up against the five-minute mark and, and like everyone, we will get five minutes, everybody gets five minutes to keep it fair and even. We will not respond to the, to the comments. We will do the, the response at the next meeting, as we have just seen. And I think we've had at least a couple of people call in and state that they wanted to be part of this. I believe Ms. Danielle Garbina and then Andrew Thule were on the list. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone else, or can we get this started?
We can get started, Mr. Mayor. Maria, can you hear me?
Yes.
Maria, would you please see if you have Danielle Garbina on the line and patch her through if you do?
Okay, and for Danielle Garbina, and I'm sorry, what's the name of the other person?
Andrew Thule is the next person after that.
And Andrew Thule, please press far one on your telephone keypad so that I can open up your line. And Mr. Andrew Thule, your line is open.
Can everybody hear me?
We, we can hear you, but I think Ms. Garbina was first in line. I think she had called over the weekend or even late last week. Ms. Garbina, are you there?
Okay, one moment, Mayor.
Thank you.
And Ms. Garbina, your line is now open.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, can. Good evening, Ms. Garbina, welcome.
Good evening, thanks for having me. All right. Here I go. What is the city doing to assure residents that an autonomous zone like CHAZ in Seattle will not develop in the city or that Bloomington Parks will not turn into homeless encampment like Minneapolis? What is the city doing to assure residents graffiti will not ruin Bloomington Parks like it did at Minnehaha Falls in Minneapolis? I lived next to Smith Park when the park was home to gang activity. While the gang activity was present, the park was not well-used, which invites more crime. It took residents and police working together to keep Smith Park safe. The residents called the police frequently and the police responded. There's concern that if the city of Bloomington follows the lead in Minneapolis, the talk of defunding or dismantling the police and the neighborhood that vowed not to call police, the parks will not be safe. What is the city doing to assure that this will not happen in Bloomington? The city website states, in quotes, "Bloomington police want to remind residents about the importance of reporting crimes. Consider it your neighborly duty to report crimes or other suspicious activity," end quote. What is the city doing to assure residents that reporting crimes will continue to be supported by the city regardless of the current changes in Minneapolis? Appreciate your time again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garbina. Now, Mr. Thule, are you still on the line, or do we have to open up Mr. Thule's line?
Yeah, you guys still hear me?
Mr. Thule, your line is open.
We can still hear you, Mr. Thule, welcome.
Okay, welcome, guys. I just want to, the other day or a few weeks ago, I was over at Smith Park riding bikes with my children, and a car had entered the, entered the park on the southeast corner of the pond, and the car parked right on the bike trail. And my children were pretty distraught having to drive or bike around the car. So I thought I'd call the non-emergency police. And I called the non-emergency police and was asked, is this an emergency? And I immediately said, no. And they said, can I put you on hold? And I said, yes. After being placed on hold for several minutes, I explained the situation at the park, and the operator told me, we, we may get to this. This makes me wonder if our police are responding to other minor park incidents the same way in our city. This leaves me as a resident of Bloomington with an uneasy feeling of protections with law enforcement in our outdoor parks. I know Smith Park i- in the past has had problems with gangs, drugs, people in the park after hours, porta potties being lit on fire and et cetera. I also want to address a post that was recently put out on a group called Facebook Together Bloomington about some boys kicked out of Smith Park, and specifically pointed out these teens being black indigenous people of color. The post went on to say that a resident blocked their car and with this car, with his car, and threatened to call police as they were lighting off sparklers in the park. Maybe a resident did this, or maybe they did not, as we don't have really proof of this, but only the shadow of racism in our park in a second-hand account. Maybe the resident was tired of calling police and actually decided to take the law in his own hands. In the next meeting, I want the city manager and the law enforcement to follow up on this incident and do an investigation of it. And also, we want to know what we're doing to keep our parks safe for the residents of Bloomington. Moving along, I wanted to address the city and its willingness to move ahead fully with ranked choice voting during COVID-19 without being transparent to the public, of voters to make our voting system less transparent and more costly to the taxpayers of Bloomington. The Charter Commission on June 11th voted ranked choice voting down and closed the meeting. After the meeting was closed, Melissa Manderscheid, our city attorney, illegally opened a illegally opened the meeting back up while looking at how many callers were lost. Another vote was taken during this meeting, and this did not pass. And then discussion happened about further meeting with staff and commission about ranked choice voting. The agenda packet states that the city was technically out of order. So, the vote nor discussion after the meeting technically really didn't happen. The commission meeting coming up July 9th should not be about ranked choice voting, but instead should be a meeting to discuss another meeting about ranked choice voting. Another interesting note is that the city is moving forward with ranked choice voting. It's not, and has not helped craft language with residents to help save Bloomington Parks from development. The city attorney, Melissa, has stated that she can't work with the language provided from residents for saving the public parks. I want to make it clear that it's us, the city residents, that pay Melissa Manderscheid's salary and all your salaries. In the next council meeting, I want to know where we are at with the garbage collection, the garbage collection contract also. The city has been busy talking about ballot language for garbage collection and been very quiet about costs of garbage collection to the residents. The city council voted to give the city manager and the mayor the power to sign an unseen contract, which I feel is very wrong. Please provide an update in the next council meeting regarding the contract and the signing of the contract, and how much extra each resident can expect to pay in garbage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thule.
Maria, do we have any other callers wishing to speak on Agenda Item 7.2, the public comment period?
Okay, and again, if you would like to comment on Agenda Item 7.2, press star 1 on your telephone keypad. And we have a comment coming from the line of Mr. Terry McEnroy. Your line is open.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I missed your name. Gary, what's your last name, Gary?
That's Terry McEnroy.
Oh, Terry McEnroy. I'm sorry, I misheard you. Mr. McEnroy, how are you this evening? Good evening.
Mr. McEnroy, your line is open. You may now speak. Maybe your line is on mute. Please unmute your lines.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members, and thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight.
Good evening.
This council adopted a seventh pillar this year titled Transparency and Engagement, and it's one that I really fully support. I'm asking in earnest tonight, where was the transparent dialogue with citizens about RCV this last year? Like any voting process, there are pros and cons, even with RCV. And this major policy change deserves a thorough, in-depth discussion with the citizens. However, I can't seem to find much discussion about RCV through all the city records. During the beginning of the pandemic, there were council positions that now is not necessarily the right time to make big decisions. Then only a few weeks later, the RCV charter amendment was moved forward to the Charter Commission on April 20th. I re-listened to all the council recordings this year, and the focus of those meetings mentioning RCV was primarily how to expedite the RCV charter amendment forward to be able to put on the November ballot. I did not really hear any discussions about pros or cons. In the last few weeks, I've sent each of you the following email request, three times. And unfortunately, I did not receive a reply from any of you. I was asking you about the May 16, 2019 Charter Commission Council meeting about a year ago. And in that meeting, former Mayor Winslet suggested having additional study meetings for city council in order to gain more information before making a decision regarding ranked choice voting. And the city of council agreed to this, to have additional conversations via study meetings in order to gain more information before making a decision regarding ranked choice voting. I still haven't been able to find anything that confirms that. So, I'm asking where the transparency is. And the Sun Current newspaper has run no article, zero on RCV. There's only been four letters to the editor from ranked choice voter supporters and for Fair Vote Minnesota members, including Steve Velkin. In a May council meeting this year, a council member mentioned that there's considerable awareness with the public. But reality, there's no hard evidence at all to support that. The council decided to move this forward during an unprecedented worldwide pandemic, an economic crisis, and during racial unrest. There are obviously other more important concerns for citizens. So, what metric is available to measure public awareness? You mentioned earlier, in this meeting, they talked about social media metrics. So, I looked at the Facebook metrics showing in a city of 88,000. In two years promoting RCV to the public, the RCV for Bloomington's Facebook page has only 161 followers. That's in two years. Now, compare this to the Save the Valley View Park group effort. In four months, it garnered 844 followers. And it was with, and they also presented over 2,000 petitions. There's no measurable urgent request or demand by citizens to consider RCV. The only urgency seems to be with council members, the funded organizations such as Fair Vote Minnesota, and several state Democratic legislators such as Steve Velkin. Since he is the sponsor of this legislation and a former council member. I'm concerned about the cons, that there hasn't been a rigorous cost comparison of RCV and the current election system. Since the city budgets are being decreased significantly, we should be extremely sure RCV is not going to cost additional money. In Minneapolis in 2013, it cost five times as much as expected. They were short $400,000. They made up the shortage by not hiring staff. In Bloomington, we don't have that luxury. We've already laid off staff during this economic crisis. And it's just not Minneapolis. The MIT Election Data and Science Lab, which surveys all of the elections, including RCV elections, presented a research that was called the Cost of Ranked Choice Voting. In general, RCV jurisdictions are found to spend significantly more on elections overall. It's a five standard deviation greater than what would have been otherwise for general elections. So, this indicates there's going to be higher election cost. Have we looked at that thoroughly before we present this to our citizens? And shouldn't they have that discussion in front of them? And the final thing, and hopefully I still have time to mention this, it's the disenfranchised subminorities. Air on June 1, 2020, you stated the following. "As a Bloomington community, we need to ensure that George Floyd is remembered, and we need to acknowledge and find a way to address the enormous racial and ethnic inequalities that continue to enlarge in American society." If we truly believe in these words, we really need to look at the numbers. And in the numbers, according to the Minneapolis election reports from its first RCV election in 2009, 6.4% of all ballots cast contained an error. Even more disturbing, almost 30% of the ballots cast in predominantly East African and Somali precincts in Sea Riverside neighborhood contained ballots.
Mr. McEnroy? I'm sorry, your time is up. Mr. McEnroy?
All right, thank you very much.
But if I could ask you, Mr. McEnroy, I'm looking here at an email from Chris Wilson on Monday, June 22nd. I received it. I believe Dwayne Lowman received it, Janet Lewis. And I believe she attempted to answer your question. And then I think you followed up again, and I see an email. I know I sent an email to you last Thursday on July 2nd, basically asking again, I thought that Chris Wilson had answered your question and asking if that didn't answer your question, what specifically you were looking for. Did you receive those emails?
I did not. I will look again, do another search. I actually searched the names for all of the members as well. And just prior to getting on this phone call, I researched again.
No, I know that Chris Wilson responded. I believe Councilmember Lowman has responded, and I know that I responded to you as well, because I can see those response emails here in front of me.
I look daily, I can assure you. But I will go look again and see if something happened with the system that it did just, if it's in my outbox or maybe just a spam box too.
All right, very good.
I appreciate you answering. I'll take a look again. If not, I'll get ahold of Chris and I'll send you my work address.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McEnroy. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I could, just on this point quickly. I did also respond to those emails. I went back and checked in my email, and I sent responses on June 18th and June 25th as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Coulter. So, I think we've got just probably time for one more caller. Do we have another caller, Ms. Wilson?
Maria, do we have any additional caller for public comment period, Agenda Item 7.2?
Okay, and again, if you would like to comment on Agenda Item 7.2, press star 1 on your telephone keypad. And we don't have any addition. We have the line of Mr. Kevin Anderson. Your line is open.
Good evening, Mr. Anderson. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening. Go ahead.
Okay. I've got several items. I have a few that I'd like to get some answers to. Maybe we could touch on them on the next meeting. I'd like to know the status of the water park, our World Expo, and the parking ramp, all kind of South Loop things. I haven't heard exactly what's going on. I did hear that the water park financing had gone by the wayside. I think that the World Expo should be scrapped, and I'd like to hear that, in fact, that is the case. And the parking ramp, without the water park there, it doesn't seem like a parking ramp would make much sense. Also, the, and I'm just, I just kind of have a laundry list here. But the Port Authority, I just, I just think that it's the city's kind of dirty little secret. It's the mayor and the city manager and the people from the port using the Port Authority to avoid public comment and to move projects forward in the South Loop to kind of, oh, take care of their union supporters and do, put things on the fast track without public comment. And I really take exception to that. I'd like to see the mayor and Councilwoman Carter give up their spot on the Port Authority. I think they should easily see this as a conflict of interest. I know with our last mayor, he happens to have a restaurant in the middle of that right now. And there have been votes taken that certainly were in direct conflict of that. And as citizens, I don't think that we're made well enough aware of what's going on in our South Loop. And I don't like the way that the tax increment financing has been threaded away and projects there are done with, oh, without making people aware. Also, this community budget advisory council, I noticed that one of the leads for that comes from that same Port Authority group, which I don't have any confidence in. It's filled with donors to all of your campaigns, which I don't think makes a lot of sense. There's three people that are fresh out of Bloomington's leadership program. And I just think going to the city of Bloomington for leadership help is kind of like going to the circus to try to learn calculus. It just doesn't make any sense. The first steps that this, that this community budget has taken, the community budget group talks about a levy. And we all know that there's going to have to be cuts made. It seems to me that we should be working on items that we're going to cut first before trying to immediately go to the levy. And also, their timeline doesn't really fit. It doesn't allow for public comment. He said that he'll be addressing you again in August. Hopefully, he'd have something ready in September. You know, one day at the, one day at the farmer's market kind of reminds me of the ranked choice voting 11:30 public comment that we had before. It's just, it's just not adequate. And we hopped into, with this group to get a good start. And it seems like we're losing ground in a hurry. And the group that was brought together doesn't make a lot of sense. The big thing that I want to talk about is the way that you've used this COVID emergency to push through the ranked choice voting. I just think it's a big farce. Mr. Kelly opened our meeting with 15 minutes talking about the COVID emergency and how it might affect our families. People's families and businesses are affected so much by this. And the first thing that you guys put on our plate is some additional nonsense in regards to this ranked choice voting. We won't know until late in August if, in fact, it is going to, well, mid-August anyways, if, in fact, it is going to ballot. And that would only leave two and a half months for those of us that oppose it to prepare. And there's no way that we can lodge, oh, a meaningful dissent to this during this COVID emergency, and you're aware of that. One of the charter members at their meeting stated that with the people that are for ranked choice voting being so well-funded, it's kind of like a horse race with one group, the group that is for it, halfway around the racetrack while us that dissent are sitting in the gate. And you know that that's a...
Mr. Anderson, your time is up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the call.
Okay. Yep.
We are at our 20-minute time mark, so I will officially close the public comment period for this evening. Thanks to all the callers this evening. If we move on to our Items 8, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. First up here is Item 8.1, which is a new therapeutic massage enterprise license application. And I believe Mr. Junker is going to lead us through this one.
Yep. There we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This massage license today is for Ms. Esterly. She's been licensed with us for many, many years, practicing out of her home. She just recently moved out of Bloomington for the first time, and now is renting a space. So, we've done our inspections. We know her very well for many years. And just looking for your approval.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Junker? Mr. Junker, do you have a camera not turned on this evening? Or are you just joining us by phone this evening?
I'm on my home laptop. It worked last time, but I don't see myself popping up either, so.
We'll have to get you next time.
Yeah. Still me.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Junker? I see no questions. If not, this is a public hearing. I would like to now open the public hearing consideration of approval of a new therapeutic massage enterprise license for Ms. Julie Esterly.
Maria, do we have any callers wishing to speak to the council on Agenda Item 8.1, a therapeutic massage license?
Okay, and at this time, if you would like to comment on Agenda Item 8.1, press star 1 on your telephone keypad. And we don't have any comments at this time. You may continue.
Thank you much. Seeing no one coming forward electronically, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So, move, Martin?
Second, Councilmember Lowman.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Lowman to close the public hearing. Hearing no discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing passes 7-0. Counsel, any additional questions or comments? Or need more information from Mr. Junker at all? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I am happy to move that we approve the therapeutic massage enterprise license for Julie Esterly doing business as Julie Esterly.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Carter to approve a therapeutic massage enterprise license as outlined in Item 8.1. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter? Lowman?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. On to Item 8.2, which is city code amendments to allow banks without drive-throughs as permitted uses in C3 and C5 zoning districts. Mr. Sean James is here this evening to help us through this one. Good evening, Mr. James.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Let me see if I can share my screen here in one minute. Or is that working for you?
It says it's still starting to share the content, but I don't think we're there yet.
Oh, okay.
Oh, there it is. And it's on the screen as well. Very good.
Sorry about that. Bear with me. So, this item is a privately initiated code amendment. It intended to allow banks without drive-throughs in our C3 and C5 commercial zoning districts. For the applicant who is specifically interested in a bank without a drive-through at the former Wedding Day Jeweler site, which is located at 7901 Penn Avenue and is currently zoned C3. So, this proposed amendment then would make that use permitted at that site. So, banks are defined in the code then as an establishment... So, banks are defined in the code then as an establishment with the primary purpose of deposit banking, including but not limited to commercial banks, savings institutions, credit unions. So they usually have a teller that's present at the site, and typically include a few offices. Looking at the use table today, shown here, banks are permitted in most of our commercial zoning districts and are limited in C3, C4, and C5. That means they cannot make up the entire floor area of the building and are instead limited to just 25% of the building's floor area. And currently, the code treats all banks the same, whether or not they have drive-throughs. Now, the first change that's proposed with this amendment is to distinguish those two different banks, you know, one with drive-through, one without drive-through. Banks with drive-throughs are certainly more common. In most of the city's existing banks that are in a standalone building have drive-throughs, often with multiple lanes. And so these types of banks are certainly much more auto-oriented. And banks without drive-throughs, quite frankly, aren't especially common. However, there are kind of recent trends with more and more online banking services to, where banks, you know, don't need the drive-through at that, at a location. Additionally, banks without drive-throughs are better able to use some of our existing buildings, especially those that are smaller. The second proposal then with this ordinance is to allow banks without drive-throughs then as permitted in C3 and C5, while other use designations remain the same. And what's really substantive substantive with the code change is shown in blue on the screen. Staff's perspective is that a bank without a drive-through would operate and have really similar off-site impacts and an office or another standalone retail type of use. So these uses are shown in the, in the screen here for comparison. So staff is recommending that banks without drive-throughs be permitted in the same districts that also permit offices and standalone retail. So currently, the C3 and C5 districts are all located in our Penn American district, except for a couple parcels that are located east of 35. And currently, REI and Home Furniture are located at those sites. So staff believes that a bank without a drive-through in this Penn American area especially would fit the intent of that district to be more walkable, pedestrian-friendly, and provide, you know, a bank would provide a support service to, to a mix of residential and commercial uses and, you know, enhance the livability of the area. So again, another benefit of the change is that some of our legally non-conforming buildings that are smaller in these districts would be able to become banks without drive-throughs. Also, it adds a little bit of flexibility to the code. So with that, we do have planning commission and staff's recommendation for the following motion to adopt the ordinance, and then a motion for summary publication. I will note just quickly here, the wording on the summary publication motion, please refer to your motion summary in your, that's been handed out to, if that will include the correct language. With that, I'm happy to answer questions, and I believe the applicant is available also.
Thank you, Mr. James. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. Have, have we seen either in Bloomington or other places where banks have built a, a building, a facility without a drive-through and then come back later to request that drive-through, and is that a concern here?
Mr. James.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I'm not aware of that situation happening in Bloomington, nor would it be allowed in our code, especially with this change. We make it really clear that, you know, we allow banks without drive-throughs, and we would limit those with drive-throughs. So I think the code change would make it really clear that that would not be allowed.
Okay. Thank you. My second question relates to safety. Would this facility be allowed to have like an outdoor ATM that people could walk up to? I'll be honest, I've been to a number of banks without drive-throughs, but typically in urban areas, and a lot of times, it seems like they are required to have the ATM in some type of enclosed area that maybe you have to use your card to get into so that only one person can be in there, so for some safety issues, as opposed to someone standing there, you know, at night with a bunch of cash. So are, do we have any safety concerns about this type of use in that area? Or in the air?
Mr. James.
Councilmember, yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Nelson. The applicant can speak more directly, but I don't believe an outdoor ATM is proposed at this location. And I did in just brief research, see if we had any standards for these types of ATMs. Don't believe we do, but we haven't received a ton of requests in the past. But it is something that planning staff has talked about potentially being, you know, a topic in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. James.
Counsel, additional questions? If not, I see the applicant, I think, has popped up on our screen. Perhaps could you address Councilmember Nelson's question regarding safety and security? Whether or not an outdoor ATM, would that be secure, or will there be one at all? And if you could identify yourself, please.
Yeah, Zach Klobuchar, project architect for this specific location. To both of those points, this specific location itself, we would not have a drive-through at any point coming in, and all the ATMs are currently in the space, and that's the intention, to have them in the space as well. In order to access inside the space during kind of off-hours, you need a credit card to enter. There will be ATMs inside, but no, there's, there's no current or future plans to do anything as far as drive-throughs or exterior ATMs. And thank you very much for allowing me to talk. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you for being with us this evening. Counsel, any additional questions? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, and I would like to open the public hearing now for item 8.2, which is regarding city code amendments to allow banks without drive-throughs to be permitted uses in C3 and C5 zoning districts. Ms. Wilson.
Maria, do we have any callers for agenda item 8.2?
Okay, and at this time, if you would like to comment on agenda item number 8.2, press power one on your telephone keypad. And you don't have any comment at this time. You may continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one coming forward electronically, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, so moved.
Councilmember Lowman with the motion.
Second, Nelson.
And Councilmember Nelson with the second. Thank you so very much. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. No further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Baloga.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Counsel, any additional discussion on this one? I will just note that I do remember when the discussion was whether or not to allow drive-throughs in banks, not whether or not to not allow drive-throughs at banks. Councilmember Nelson, did you have a question? Or was your hand just up from last time?
I didn't lower my hand.
Counsel, any additional questions? If not, I would look for, we have two motions to get this through. I would look for a motion on both of those.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion unless Councilmember Baloga would like to do it, since it's, I believe this is in your area. All right.
Go to it, Councilmember Lowman.
All right. I'll move to adopt an ordinance to amend chapter 21 of the city code to allow banks or financial institutions without drive-throughs as permitted uses in the C3 and C5 zoning district.
Second.
We have a motion by Lowman and a second by, I'm sorry, I missed the
Baloga.
Thank you, Councilmember Baloga, and a second by Councilmember Baloga to approve item 8.2 to amend chapter 23 of the city code. Any additional questions, comments? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Baloga.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Lowman?
Mayor, I just want to make sure, I thought I heard you say in that last motion that chapter 23, but I want to make sure it was chapter 21 that we were amending.
Oh, I, that's what I get for not wearing my glasses. Your motion was correct, and my summary was incorrect. I should have put my glasses on.
I just want to be sure that we were clear on what, what chapter we were amending.
Appreciate that.
Okay, and I'll go ahead and move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of the ordinance attached to the staff report.
Second, Baloga.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lowman and a second by Councilmember Baloga for summary publication. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Baloga.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. So what, what is the timeline for turning the, the former jewelry store or wedding store into a banquet? When, when should we expect the ribbon cutting?
We're working on CDs right now, and hopefully, it'll be done in the next couple of months.
Very good. Well, good. Well, thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing it and seeing it open. Thanks much for being with us this evening.
Thank you again.
With that, I'll call item 8.3, which is a shared mobility ordinance. Mr. Palermo is going to lead us through this. Good evening, Michael. Welcome.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Let me share my screen. Now, is it showing my presentation?
Don't see your presentation yet. Ooh, it's starting to share content now, and there it is.
Great. So, as you said, this ordinance is a shared mobility ordinance. We're talking about shared vehicles today. As you might remember, in 2019, it was added to the planning and engineering work plan to kind of investigate shared vehicles, dockless bikes or docked bikes, and how the city might approach that in anticipation that we might be approached by an operator. In discussion for our 2020 work plan, council directed staff to prohibit dockless bikes, but to keep it open for a dock bike or docked vehicle system. To note, we haven't been approached by an operator yet, but to have this in place will kind of expedite that process if and when we are approached. This ordinance will essentially allow a docked vehicle, shared vehicle system. So shared vehicles for the purpose of this ordinance are IP-enabled vehicles for public sharing. They may be electrified or manually propelled. They might be docked and dockless, and I'll kind of explain what I mean by dockless in a moment here. But they're IP-enabled, so there's a company that is monitoring these, and you check them out. In the example in this photo, you can see Nice Ride, there's a kiosk that you use your credit card, and you return it to the dock. Or in the lower photo here, there's a scooter system, and you use your smartphone app to unlock the vehicle, and it's charging you for the amount of time that you're using the vehicle, and then you check it back in, and you'll be, you'll be charged. And you'll see in the lower left-hand corner, there's kind of a hybrid approach where there's docked vehicles and dockless vehicles, kind of in the same system that Nice Ride operates. And many vehicles now are becoming more and more electrified with e-assist bikes or scooters. They're becoming more popular. So the ordinance would allow, while we say dockless bikes, it will, they will operate like a dock system, so we'll get into the details of how that will work. But typically, how people are using shared vehicles, trips are, on average, one to two miles. They're not used, for most people, for longer commutes. They're kind of not designed to be that comfortable, because they don't want people to, it to be desirable to steal, you know? But they still function, and they serve a purpose. They typically replace a walking trip. It's a multimodal approach to transportation. You might take transit somewhere, hop on a scooter to finish, kind of that last mile, uh, uh, last mile option. You can see this example here. This is Normandale Lake. You have a nice bus stop, nice right-of-way that would make a great spot for a dock to be located. And by walking that same distance, it takes you about 15 minutes to go to another bus stop where a dock could be located. Whereas if you took a bike, it takes five minutes. So that's almost a 10-minute saving one way. You're thinking, on my lunch hour, that's a 20-minute saving that, you know, to go to the restaurant, Pancheros, for example. That, that's valued to people. Or if you want to ride around Normandale Lake, that's much quicker than walking, which may take you over an hour. So there, there are advantages to having this. So it serves people working, it serves residents in the area, and it can serve visitors to the community who can use it to explore local businesses. So this proposal will be amending our right-of-way permit process. The advantage of using our existing process, one, we're not recreating something. We don't, we're not implementing any new system. It's already in place. We're just merely adding this definition to the, the right-of-way permit process. And the right-of-way process is helpful because, one, operators will be required to identify where these docks will be located. They'll, they'll be required to say how long they'll be in operation. You know, typically, it will be for one season, which runs from April or May through October. Don't have much winter use, especially with scooters and electric vehicles. The batteries just don't work in the cold weather, and kind of hard to ride a bicycle when there's snow on the ground. But the permit process also gives the ability for the city to revoke the permit if their issues do arise with the location. And this will help expedite the process in the future if we are approached by an operator. We will have this framework in place and a permit ready to go. There are some issues with shared vehicles that we attempt to address in this ordinance. Illegal parking is a big one. We don't want bikes to be left in the right-of-way blocking or obstructing where people are walking. We don't want it to be a safety issue. You don't want bikes to be left in parks or, you know? And there's all sorts of places where they can end up. So that is the advantage of having the dock system. And we'll attempt to address user safety. There's some things that we can require. You can see the ordinance has a geographic restriction requiring the permit, and a big component of it will be a memorandum of understanding that would require operators to enter into. Another issue that commonly happens is vehicle maintenance, and then there's potential for data sharing. So these are all things that we would require, and I'll kind of jump into more details of these. So this is what I mean by a dockless system that functions like a dock. So moving forward, Nice Ride Minnesota, which is the bike-share operator in Minneapolis, they have, are moving completely to a dockless system, but they're operating in their current, like their current model, in a docked system. So they're calling these virtual docks. And you won't be, you check your bike out at a locate, a specific, specified location with a sign that's marked, and you'll be required to return to another location that's marked and designated. So in the ordinance, we call these designated areas. The bike won't turn off unless you're in one of these areas. But we make it clear that as long as the bike is rented, you can leave it in a bike rack. You can enter a store and come back. You know, people might do that if they're just hopping in to, to grab soda at a gas station or something. But typically, if they're going to be anywhere for a longer period of time, they're going to look But typically, if they're going to be anywhere for a longer period of time, they're going to look for one of these designated areas. Having these virtual docks is beneficial because they're less costly to install. A physical dock can cost upwards of $40,000, or weighing electrical wire and all the physical components that go with that, just maintenance of that. Whereas, a virtual dock like this, you can test it out, you know, it's a sign that's not super costly. It's paint on the ground potentially, and you, if it's not working, you know, it's not a huge loss to move it or, you know, they're much more flexible to, for the operator, and they can really kind of hone in where those virtual docks should be located. We're proposing in the ordinance that they would be restricted to our development districts. There's a couple of reasons for that. One, our development districts, Normandale Lake, Penn American District, and South Loop have a higher concentration of transit. Normandale Lake has some enhanced bus shelters. Penn American will soon have the orange line as shown here on the map, with the Knox American Station. And South Loop has the light rail and the red line, it's going to be D-line. Those are great connection points for people to hop off transit, use a shared vehicle to get to their destination. Furthermore, these locations also tend to have more bicycle facilities. Normandale Lake, there are shared trails almost throughout, or multi-use trails throughout all the street network. There's a spot for bikes to go, same with South Loop. And as more development occurs, we're getting more and more trails along the roadways. So, there's a spot for the bikes to safely maneuver the city. So, this is what we're talking about when trying to encourage user safety. And then there's just a higher concentration of destinations in these locations. These are most dense areas of the city. There's more businesses, there's hotels, there's just more people in these areas to utilize the bikes. And like we said, the average trip is one to two miles, so you're not taking these to commute all the way across the city. You're looking to kind of commute within certain areas. So, this is the highest likelihood of where operators would want to be anyway. And this is something, if an operator came to us and potentially wanted to change, we could change in the future if we saw demand potentially, you know, in 98th Street as the bus rapid transit comes in. Maybe that's a new node that we include, can be amended if we need to. An important component would be to require a memorandum of understanding. It would, in that memorandum of understanding, we require remedies for if a vehicle is left abandoned outside of a dock or designated area. So, here's an example in our South Loop district where a Nice Ride bike found its way. It looked like there was even snow on the ground. I saw this one day, and, you know, that memorandum of understanding would outline who would be responsible for that bike. We would maybe give the operators the specified amount of time to retrieve that bike before the city would go out and retrieve it, and we would likely charge them a cost for retrieving that bike to recoup expenses. And, or if a vehicle is not being maintained, who do we contact about that maintenance and what are remedies related to that? And we could also require in that memorandum of understanding that certain requirements, like a driver's license or a prompt that reminds users that they should be wearing a helmet or a minimum age for that use of that bike be implemented. And then last, there's data sharing. These operators, they are tracking these vehicles. Obviously, they need to be able to turn them on and off, knowing if they're in a designated area or not. But they're using that information to kind of hone where to put docks and understand where people are traveling. And that's data that could be valuable to the city for planning purposes, where we should invest in more bicycle infrastructure and other transportation planning. So, we would want some sort of data sharing with the operator. And that's pretty typical. Most cities have some sort of data that they collect from the operators to better influence their transportation planning. So, we don't lay out all the specifics in the ordinance. We remain a little bit flexible in what would the specifics of a memorandum of understanding would include. But the work group that kind of has been working on this last year, assuming we move forward with this ordinance, will continue to meet and kind of come up with what are the wants that we would ask in an MOU if an operator were to come, and what are the specific requirements so that we're ready to go if that does happen. I'm open for questions if council has any.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo. I appreciate your comments on flexibility, and I think that's a very good idea, especially considering seeing how the technology is evolving already with the dockless docking. And so, I think that's a wise way to move forward, especially with the work group considering these things. Councilmember Loman? And then I see Councilmember Carter and Councilmember Martin as well.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Michael, you know, I'm not as familiar with these bikes. I haven't really had the opportunity to use them. Help me understand how these things work. So, once they're placed in the dock, do the pedals lock up? I mean, what would stop somebody from just kind of, you know, taking it out? I know that you had mentioned in the staff report, issues in Edina and other places that they've had. How does that dockless thing work, you know, respect with that, or help me understand how that locks up?
Mr. Palermo?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, it could, depends on the vehicle. There are some vehicles where, as you lock it, it literally locks the bike. There's a mechanism that closes through the wheel spoke, so the wheel spoke won't turn. Some vehicles are equipped with like an alarm that can sense if someone picks it up and is moving, and the alarm will start sounding. So, the vehicles are constantly changing. Nice Ride, as they're moving to their electric vehicles, they're actually looking at installing kind of temporary bike racks, they kind of look like. And they'll have kind of, I mean, out of the side, it's hard to explain, but kind of like a loop that goes out of the side of the frame that essentially will lock to those bike racks. So, each bike is a little bit different, but they do have ways to kind of lock and to detect if someone is moving them once they've been, once they're not rented.
Thank you.
Like.
Thank you.
Geo-fencing, so they're tracking exactly where they are. They can, you know, locate within a certain few feet of where that vehicle is. That's how they know if they're in the designated area or not, because they're tracking them at all times.
Thank you. That's what, one of my concerns was that we weren't going to just open this up and make it similar to what we had experienced in other places. We'd like to see this be successful for folks to be able to utilize alternative transportation. I know it's one of our goals that we have as a city. Thank you very much for clarifying that for me.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two really quick questions, and potentially, this is something that's going to be worked into the MOU that was mentioned. So, just first, I don't know if we have seen, in the experience of any other communities, the virtual docks? If folks are kind of dropping those in there? I know we're not going to have them laying all over town in this scenario, but if, those can still get kind of messy because there isn't a physical structure to hold them. And then kind of the second question was, are we anticipating that we're going to have any requirements on a company coming in, providing this feature in each of those kind of nodes or development areas that was mentioned? Especially to kind of encourage being able to ride from one destination and drop it off to the next, as opposed to having kind of singletons from different companies all over?
Mr. Palermo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Martin. So, the second question, I don't know if we would necessarily require that they operate in all three. That is something we could explore. But we certainly wouldn't prohibit someone from operating in all three districts, so you can travel between them. I think that they're close enough to where you could easily do that, where there are space. So, I think that we're likely to see an operator who is already operating in Richfield and/or Edina because they want to have that connection. So, that is something that they, that operators look at. And so, that someone coming from Edina could leave their bike in Bloomington or Richfield in Bloomington. So, they do look at that connection point. I'm not sure that will go as far as to require it. But the city of Minneapolis did actually do that. They required a redistribution. They found that all the bikes were ending up in downtown, and so they required a redistribution. So, that is something that if it does become an issue, we could, at a later point, as someone re-ups for their permit, we could require that in a later MOU. And remind me again, the first question?
No worries. Just with the, kind of the virtual docks, since there isn't a physical structure, you're plugging anything into? Do those get just kind of piled up at the end of the day, or are they fairly neat as well?
They can be, they're fairly neat. I think if they're not standing up, that alarm would set off again. So, if the, I think it has like an accelerometer in there that can tell if it's standing upright or knocked over. So, if it's knocked over, that alarm would set off, and that's where that MOU could, would identify, well, if they didn't go and pick it up, we would go out and we would likely have a fee associated with that. So, if we're going out and cleaning up their mess, we would be charging them for that. And that's where those details would be determined in that MOU.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I was just going to say, from what I've seen though, most people stand them upright, they, it's pretty clear where to put them. I think when you get in just a purely dockless system where you can leave it wherever, then people kind of tend to leave it wherever. But if you have it clearly marked where to put it in, most people follow that pretty closely.
Got you. Thank you.
And I will add, Councilmember Martin, seeing this in actual action, both on the university campus and downtown, it's very market-driven in terms of connectivity and redistribution of bikes, where it's a popular ending spot. A lot of times, there would be a lot of bikes there, and Nice Ride would have to send a truck out and they'd load them on the back of a truck and redistribute them around the city. So, it's a, it's market-driven where they end up doing the connections, and it's also market-driven from their perspective, from an operator's perspective, as to how they get from, how they redistribute their bikes appropriately. So, Councilmember Carter, you got a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So, my question, I also appreciate the flexibility that's built into this language. And my question is around identifying those specific nodes, those three nodes. And I actually wonder if we would want to add language, like, we can list those three, but then add language around potentially other heavily trafficked commercial nodes per approval in the MOU. And I'm just thinking about the revitalization projects that we're hoping will happen, like at 90th and Lindale. And then I think about Old Chocopee in France. And, you know, I would hate for other parts of our community that possibly could be heavily trafficked in the near future to miss out or for us to have to revisit the language as we continue to revitalize and redevelop. And so, that would be one suggestion that I would have. But otherwise, I think it's really exciting. So, thank you.
Mr. Palermo, what's the reasoning behind limiting it to our three districts?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, we did have discussion on whether we would just keep it open citywide or if we would limit it to specific geographic areas. And I think the biggest reasons for limiting it to the development districts is that safety aspect, where we have bike infrastructure in place. It connects to trails like the Highland Trail or the Lake Nacomis Trail. So, there is that bicycle infrastructure in place where vehicles can operate safety. So, that was the biggest reason for limiting it there. And then just being that, knowing that it does complement transit. I think as the city develops, we're not there yet, but as the city does develop, that is something we could, we would probably change in the future. But most of our development is forecasted for these three development districts. About 75% of our development in the near future is in these development districts. But Lindell Avenue I can see as one of those major connection points. We talked about Normandale College also being the spot where people might want to go. So, in the future, we might open this up to major corridors that have that bicycle infrastructure connection point. But we're not quite there in our trail system yet.
So, I, actually, I'm glad that you mentioned Normandale because I was thinking about Normandale College and the new bike path on France and the continuation of the bike path down to Old Chocopee. And then the ability to get from that bike path over to Penn American would not be hard. And so, I guess, I hear what you're saying. I also think that there probably is opportunity to include additional nodes if we really wanted to. But, I don't know. I guess, I guess I don't, you know, upon approval, I'm just wondering if we could have a little bit more flexibility there.
Well, I will say, Councilmember Carter, I don't think this is the be-all and end-all. I think if there is, we see that demand, and I think that's where the data sharing will certainly come into effect and be very helpful. And as I mentioned earlier, so much of this is market-driven. If there is the demand, if there is the need, the desire to get to Normandale or up and down Lindale, the operators are going to hear it and they're going to come back and ask us for it. But I think I agree right now to leave it to the development districts as a starting point for the city. We don't have one in, we don't have an operator even who has applied or is considering the city right now. So, I think, personally, I think it makes sense to limit it to these three so we can see how it runs and gives us all kinds of flexibility to make changes in the future if we, if and when we need to.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, if we had an operator approach us and they were interested in other areas of the community based on their own, like, market analysis, would we say, sorry, no, you can only be in these three nodes? Or would we be open to saying, okay, well, our language is this, but if you think, based on your experience and your own market analysis, we'd be, I mean, given this information, we'd be open to doing something different? And would we have openness to that, or would we just say, no, not at this point?
I mean, I'll have Mr. Palermo log in here, but I mean, for me personally, I would be open to it. It would require an ordinance change and a discussion based on that. But I think if an operator came in and said, we can't do this without connections to Normandale or we definitely want to be up and down Lindale, I think it would be worth a discussion to have with them. Perhaps in a phased installment, we could get them going and get them moving in the three development districts that it would be allowed in, and then start to consider a change to the ordinance to allow an extension. So, absolutely, I think you and I have both said the word already, flexibility. And I think to look at it in that way, I think is the way to look at this whole thing. Mr. Palermo, anything to add to that?
I would say, Mr. Mayor, you're correct. And seeing that this is in the, it's in the chapter 17, so it doesn't, this hasn't gone to the planning commission, this just goes directly to council. So, it makes it a little bit quicker process for us to be able to make that code amendment if it is requested, and we can bring that to council to make that decision, you know? It wouldn't take a whole lot of staff time to just edit that section. It's not hugely. So, I think that can move pretty quickly and in an operator's timeline if they were that admin about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Michael, what I didn't see in the staff report is, is the process of approval of the MOU. Who will approve those? Will it be vetted by anybody else other than?
Mr. Palermo, what's the process for the MOUs?
So, that would be led by our Public Works Division and working with our legal division. We, like I said, our work group is kind of working on, would work with those specifics, and that's something we can bring back to council to get their input on if they think those specifics are appropriate. I'm trying, I'm speaking a little bit out here, but I think, I'm not entirely sure. I don't think there's a council approval. I could be wrong in that with the memorandum of understanding. Maybe, um, what's, uh, Manderscheid, you might know if?
Well, I'm, I'm, Mr. Palermo, Mr. Councilmember Beloga, I don't believe the, I believe the council has looked at, but I don't think the council has, uh, approval over MOUs in any other situation. But, but I, but I do agree, Councilmember Beloga, it would be worth, if one does come along, especially the first one, to, to take a look at it at a study session and consider what might work and what might not work and see if the council has any input on that.
Well, and, Mr. Mayor, my, my direction is, is I don't think council is the appropriate place to have this group. But I also didn't see anything as to what the appropriate party or place is. Is it the planning commission? Is it staff? Is it planning staff, public works? So, uh, I think those, uh, processes have worked out and would appreciate, uh, some kind of feedback on that.
So if Mr. Palermo should be?
Yeah, this is in the Public, uh, Works jurisdiction. So it, it's under Public Works, the city engineer would be leading that, that process. This is in their chapter, the, um, the right-of-way section. So they would be leading that process. It would be staff-driven. Um, I just wasn't sure if council was need for approval or not. But I, I agree that as we move forward, you know, we would definitely keep council in the loop because this would obviously be something that would be promoted and in the community and we want, uh, information to be shared with everyone.
Can I answer your questions, Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, it does.
Good, thank you. Any additional questions? If not, this also is a public hearing. And with that, I'd like to open 8.3, our Shared Mobility Ordinance Public Hearing. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone looking to comment on this one?
Maria, do we have any callers for Agenda Item 8.3? Maria, can you hear me?
Yes.
Do we have any agenda, uh, callers for Agenda Item 8.3?
Okay, and at this time, if you would like to comment on Agenda Item 8.3, press star one on your telephone keypad. And you don't have any comment at this time, you may continue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one coming forward electronically, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, Beloga.
Second, Martin?
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter? Coulter? Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Counsel, any additional comments or questions on this? I, I will ask Mr. Palermo, I mean, I made this statement, but I don't believe we've been approached in a serious way by anybody looking to, to operate in the city of Bloomington. Is that correct or have we heard from someone?
That's correct. We haven't been approached yet.
Okay, good to know. It's just good to have this in place with the hope that somebody might eventually. Counsel, any other questions? Discussion? If not, I would look for, uh, Councilmember Beloga.
I was going to, uh, no questions, but off the motion, uh, no one else had a question.
I think we are good to go. Please do.
Uh, thank you. Move to adopt the ordinance to amend Chapter 17 of the city code to establish a shared vehicle right-of-way obstruction permit.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by, I believe I heard, Councilmember Martin, is that correct?
Yep.
Very good, thank you. A motion by Councilmember, uh, Beloga, second by Martin, to amend Chapter 17 of the city code to establish a shared vehicle right-of-way obstruction permit. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Thank you. Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Beloga?
Um, move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of the ordinance and amending the city code.
Uh, second, Martin?
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Martin approving summary publication. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much for that and, uh, please do let us know if we have any operators coming forward on this one. We can move to Item 8.4, which is Continued Regulation of Temporary Commercial Spaces Related to COVID-19. Our city attorney, Ms. Manderscheid, is going to take us through this. Ms. Manderscheid?
Good evening. Just get to this part of the agenda. Great. So we currently have a state-level, uh, emergency that was declared by the governor. There were reopening phases that have already begun pursuant to the safer, Stay Safe Minnesota Plan. And a part of that plan includes bars and restaurants. Uh, and there are specific state guidelines, um, that have been released associated with the reopening of many things, including those bars and restaurants. Um, as a part of that reopening, the state has encouraged local flexibility during, um, these extraordinary times. And with that, um, in mind, we, uh, as a council, or you as a council rather, um, during your emergency, uh, local emergency, adopted an emergency ordinance that created a local permit process. And now although that local emergency has now ended a couple of days ago, uh, last month, the council, during a council meeting, asked that we extend and continue that flexibility for our bars and restaurants. And so staff, um, from several departments worked together and, uh, drafted the attached resolution for your consideration tonight. That continues, um, what I think most of us would say has been a fairly successful permit process. Uh, the permit process, uh, mimics, overwhelmingly mimics what was in place previously and it will stay in place until a minimum of September 30th of 2020. After September 30th, um, it can continue, um, either until we return to pre-COVID occupancy, uh, of spaces or until the council rescinds it, um, by action of this body. With that, um, available for questions. Um, as a reminder, the permit, um, process, uh, is provided in the packet and allows for staff approval. Uh, and, um, it's, uh, several of those permits have been issued and it appears to be working fairly well.
Yes, it does. I would agree. Thank you. Counsel, any questions on this proposed resolution? I believe it reflects what we've talked about at least a couple of times, the, the, the desire to extend beyond our emergency declaration and, um, the desire, if needed, and the ability, if needed, to extend beyond September 30th, which I think is, uh, a wise move as well. Any questions or comments, concerns? I see no one coming forward. This is a resolution, so this is not a public hearing. So if there's no comments, counsel, I'd look for a motion for action here.
Second, Councilmember Loman?
We have a motion by Councilmember Nelson and a second by Councilmember Loman to approval resolution, uh, continuing the permitted regulation of temporary commercial space creation and expansion related to the COVID-19 global pandemic. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter? Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you much for that. We can move on to Item 9 on the agenda, our organizational business, and Item 9.1, which are planning commission appointments. And I hope you all have your packet and we extended this or we, um, uh, tabled this until this meeting, uh, based on the lateness of a later or an earlier meeting. Ms. Wilson, anything to add or?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No, all right. We have a total of two seats to fill. The terms would expire on June 23rd, 2023. And, uh, once again, we had, uh, an outstanding batch of candidates and, um, I was incredibly impressed at the, the, the depth and the, the breadth that these folks brought and so many different candidates. We were only able to appoint two of the 19, which is disappointing because there were so many. And it's, uh, uh, it is, as we have said in the past, unfortunately, it's a good problem to have because it wasn't so long ago that we didn't have this problem of, uh, so many folks applying for openings on our boards and commissions. So, um, I'll, I'll say in advance, uh, to the 17 people who are going to go away disappointed this evening, thank you. Thank you for your application. Thank you for your interest in being part of a board and a commission here in Bloomington. Thank you for, uh, wanting to participate in, in your city government. It is greatly appreciated. If you're not chosen tonight, please don't be disappointed, please don't be discouraged. Uh, just please take it as a, an opportunity to look for another opportunity within the city. And we keep saying that, uh, there are so many leadership possibilities, not only within the city, on our boards and commissions and so on, but throughout the community, whether it's with our, uh, nonprofit organizations, whether it's, uh, through, uh, a variety of different volunteer possibilities, faith organizations. Please, please, please do be involved in any way that you can find to be involved in our community because the community is stronger when you do that. So, uh, I'll say that to the 17 folks who are, who are going to be disappointed tonight. But, uh, again, thank you for your application. We really do appreciate it. So we have two folks to, two, uh, seats to fill. And counsel, if you're amenable to the, uh, the process that we've used in the past, we will go down the row here and, uh, everyone will have two votes. And, uh, as we do vote, if you could, in addition to the name, if you could list the number, so it can help, uh, Ms. Christensen as she tallies votes. And we will do this, um, uh, the way we've done it in the past, uh, folks, we'll, we'll see if we get, uh, candidates who have a majority, who end up with four votes and, and are able to move forward. If not, we will eliminate folks who received no votes or possibly one vote and work our way down until we get to a point where we're able to, uh, to, to reach consensus on, on two candidates. Uh, everybody clear on that? Everybody okay with the process? We've done this in the past on a couple of different occasions, if everybody's okay with that. Looking at the tally sheets that Ms. Christensen put together with us, she is, uh, she is the keeper of the order who gets to go first. And it looks like, uh, the order we have will be council members, in this order, we will go Councilmember Beloga, um, Carter, Coulter, Loman, Martin, Nelson, and myself. All right? And I'll be happy to, to call that out as we remind people. And again, as I said, if you could say not only the name, but the number of the candidate that you're supporting, it would be helpful for Ms. Christensen. All right? Councilmember Beloga, you lead us off if you would, please.
Very good. Uh, Number One, Abdi. Number Nine, Coulter.
Councilmember Carter?
Um, Number One, Swado Abdi, and Number Twelve, Brian Mills.
Thank you. Councilmember Coulter?
Uh, Number One, Abdi, and Number Six, Hugh Lee.
Councilmember Loman?
Sorry about that. I'll do, um, Number Six, Hugh Lee. And Number Nine, Cocton.
Councilmember Martin?
Uh, I will go with Number One, Abdi, and Number Nine, Cocton.
Councilmember Nelson?
Number Five, Hans, and Number Six, Hugh Lee.
And I will go with Number One, Abdi, and Number Nine, Cocton. So, uh, Ms. Christensen, if my math is correct, I think, uh, candidate Number One, Abdi, has five votes and Number Nine, candidate, uh, Phil Cocton, has four votes. Am I correct in saying that?
Mayor Bussey, that is correct.
Thank you. So counsel, we have a majority for two of our candidates. I would look for a motion to make appointments. Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, recommend, uh, Number One, Sudo Abdi, and Number Nine, Phil Cocton, uh, as appointments to the, uh, planning commission. For terms ending June 30th, 2023. I'm a little unsure about the terms because on the, uh, sheet, it says June 23rd and on the, uh, information, it says June 30th.
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Beloga, um, the actual end date is June 30th.
Oh, very good.
I double-checked with the co-end team.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. We got a motion by Councilmember Beloga and I think I saw Councilmember Carter trying to second?
Second.
Very good. We got a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Carter to appoint Sadu Abdi and Phil Cocton to the planning commission. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
And Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Well, congratulations to our new planning commissioners and thank you again very much to our, uh, the, the other 17 folks who did apply. I really do appreciate it. What I said earlier, I, I absolutely meant. So please, uh, don't be discouraged. Take this as an opportunity to look for another chance to, to serve the community. Let's move on to Item 9.2, our 2020 Resident Survey Custom Questions. Ms. Kirby, welcome. Thank you for sticking with us this late. Good evening.
You bet. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Diane Kirby. I'm the Community Services Director for the city of Bloomington. And tonight, we're going to talk about the 2020 Annual Resident Survey, the National Citizen Survey of Bloomington residents. And what we've got, we're getting ready to distribute the survey. We've just got one quick order of business for you as council. And so I wanted to run through, uh, that piece of business. So I'm going to go ahead and share my content here and let me just pull up my survey information here shortly. And can everybody see the PowerPoint?
It is on our screens and I believe it's being broadcast as well.
Wonderful. All right. So I thought what I'd do is just give a little bit of background information about the National Citizen Survey for our viewers at home. Um, this is our annual city satisfaction survey that we have been conducting every year now since 2012. So this will be our eighth annual survey that we have conducted here in Bloomington. This is a random sample scientific survey. It's conducted by the National Research Center out of Boulder, Colorado. One of the things that we really like about the survey is that we can compare our results against roughly 500 jurisdictions across the country. So we can benchmark our results against cities and counties across the nation. Um, this year's poll for the National Citizen Survey is July and August. So, uh, the surveys will start going out in the latter half of July and that survey, uh, polling period will continue well into August. Um, this is a scientific sample. There will be 3,000 households, uh, 3,300 households that are going to be selected to receive the survey. They will be getting a notification postcard in the next week or two saying that they've been selected to receive the survey and then the survey will be sent out the following week and then a reminder survey will be sent out the following week if they haven't filled it out. Um, the survey is completed either online or it's completed by mail. So people can, uh, use either option. And, and this is what we're going to talk about tonight. There is space available as usual for custom closed-ended questions of the city's choosing, about, uh, half a page on the fourth page of the survey. And so let's talk about those questions right now. We had included those in, um, uh, one weekly this week and I'm just gonna... There we go. So, uh, the custom questions this year are questions 13, 14, and 15. And there were two key things that we wanted to measure with our custom questions this year. One was inclusion and equity. We wanted to measure how welcoming the community is, uh, to various, uh, uh, people in our community. And then we also wanted to measure the economic impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. So our first question here is question 13. This question is how welcoming, if at all, do you think this community is for people who are, and then it's got a list of demographics, races, and, uh, uh, different types... And then it's got a list of demographics, races, and different types of ethnic groups. We actually have a question on the survey that just asks in general how welcoming the city is to people of different races. This one actually gets into the specific races and ethnicities. So that's question 13. Question 14 is how much of a priority, if at all, should it be for the City of Bloomington to focus on each of the... We're creating a diverse, inclusive, fair community, addressing social, economic, and racial equity differences, and then in a variety of categories and things like hiring more diverse staff and recruiting diverse people into business and local government. So that's question 14. And then finally, question 15 is the economic impact of COVID-19. It states, "We know the COVID-19 pandemic is challenging in many ways. Please rate how much of a problem, if at all, the following are for your household currently, and the loss of employment income as well as loss of income savings." So those are the three custom questions that appear on page four. The space we have for the custom questions is the space we get. So we only have that half page. If you want to add something to question 15, some more categories to question 15, then we would have to look at questions 14 and 13 and shave off some of those categories. So, but that's up to you. So my questions for you tonight are, what is your reaction to the custom questions? And what, if any, changes would you recommend? So that's the question that I'm putting to you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Councilmember Coulter had his hand up right away. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Diane, could you go back to question 13, please? So I'm generally not a fan of trying to write things from the podium, and it's probably even less of a good idea to try to do that from the podium over WebEx. But it just feels to me like in question 13 and question 14, there's some kind of unnecessary verbiage there. You know, like you don't need to say, for example, people who are... And it feels to me like you don't need to say that every response. Could you do something like people who are Arabic or Middle Eastern, dot, 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 Asian, Asian Indian or Pacific Islander, and so on? I'm just trying to think about how this would be more easily readable for folks. And then...
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, and then it's a similar thought on question 14. If you could go to that. Addressing social, economic, and racial equity differences. That's a lot of words before you even get to the point of that particular response. And I just, I want to make sure that we're being as clear with these responses as possible. So to the extent that, you know, like I said, even if you take out everything before the word "in", in those three, those three questions, so that it's, or I guess just the second two, rather. So it's addressing social, economic, and racial equity differences in jobs and housing, and then dot, 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 in health and education. I just feel like the more that we can take out some of that kind of unnecessary verbiage, the easier it's going to be for folks to get the question and answer it as they see fit.
And Councilmember Coulter, and Mayor, to your question, Councilmember Coulter, I know that one of the things, the National Research Center does create a lot of surveys, and one of their main efforts is try to make the surveys as understandable, as readable as possible for users and for people who are completing it. So I can check with them and get their input on your feedback.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martin, and then I see Councilmember Lohman as well.
Thank you. Yeah, so I guess just kind of a quick question and then just a suggestion on maybe a potential other topic area to explore with the question. Kind of if you could just walk me through the thought process behind on question 13. Sorry to have you bouncing all over if you wouldn't mind jumping back there. So the difference in the data that we're anticipating getting between having this question in here, spelling out all these demographic groups in the community versus that kind of general how welcoming is our community, and then cross-tabulating that with self-provided demographic information from the respondent. Just what are we looking to get with kind of this more broken-out question that we're not getting by cross-referencing those two data points?
Ms. Kirby.
So, yes, Councilmember Martin. So what we're trying to get at is, in the other question, it's very general. And in this particular question, because we're getting at these very specific demographic groups, actually, the demographics breakouts that we have don't even get this specific. So we are getting very, very specific by spelling out these demographic groups. So we wouldn't be able to get that by cross-tabulating with the demographic information that we get. So that's what we're looking at, trying to get a more micro look at how welcoming the community is to various groups.
That's great. Thank you very much. And then just kind of the other suggestion, I really appreciate that when it comes to public safety, we've got questions concentrating on overall feeling of safety, quality of police services, quality of crime prevention. But I know just kind of with the conversation that's in the air nationwide right now, I've been looking at a lot of cities offer kind of annual surveys on community safety specifically. And I really liked, and I can, again, not to craft language in the middle of the meeting, I can send some of these specifics over. The City of Toledo, for example, has questions on that annual survey. Kind of how fair do you think the department is overall? If you've had specific experiences, kind of how do you feel that's stacked up against your expectations? How satisfied are you with response times, things like that? So not to say we need a laundry list, but just as council's digging into this conversation, to be able to have kind of that lived experience side of things captured in addition to the 10,000-foot, are you happy with things?
Ms. Kirby.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. We could add a question on public safety. We would have to shave off some of the other questions. So it would just be a matter of if you would want to switch out another question or shave down a question that we currently have.
Thank you.
I'd be curious, Councilmember Martin, did you say Toledo does an entire survey on safety? Or are they just included in a bigger, broader survey?
From, and I can send this to council staff as well. From what I see, it looks like an annual digital survey that focuses specifically on their department and the interactions with the community. It didn't have a date on the one I looked at, but I assume it was their most recent.
Yeah, if you could share that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Would be, thank you.
Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Diane. So I'm going to try to see if I can throw a curveball at you here. Kind of going back to these categories, I know we've got limited space, but just something to kind of think about. We've got these different groups, but what about those folks who may fall into multiple groups? How would we assess that welcoming experience? And another group that's not really here is the LBGT group, or in the other, not as good with all the different acronyms that are beyond that. But, you know, what about that group of folks? I know right now, we're just kind of looking at equity from this standpoint, but just some other questions, or even how do maybe even women feel? So those would be, would be interesting things that I would be interested to know with this question. We may not have space to do that, but just curious. And then with this question, number 13, some folks would break out the Pacific Islander group and have that as a separate group from the Asian and the Asian Indian group. So again, there's no right or wrong way, but I just want to throw those questions out for this one, 13, and I've got some other questions on 14. I'm not necessarily looking for an answer, just want to throw that back to staff and just, you know, and maybe it's not something we could do this year. I'm just want to get our creative juices thinking about what we do with these things. With this one here, when we look at 14, I see social, economic, and racial equity differences in jobs and in housing. So if you went on ahead and marked high priority, my issue would be, which one do you mean? Jobs, or do you mean housing? And then we've got the same issue with that with health and education. I would think that we as policymakers would want to know what the differences are in those four different categories, if we could. I don't know, I mean, Councilmember Coulter talked about how to wordsmith this differently. Maybe there's a way to wordsmith this so that you could get those four different distinct... Unless we're trying to figure out if you see something with jobs and housing, which adds like another whole layer to my question. But I would just be curious if we could, you know, maybe break those four down or maybe, you know, learn some of the rationale why we're putting those items together.
All right. Councilmember Lohman, thank you for that input. We will look at that.
Other questions for Ms. Kirby? Councilmember Carter.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Ms. Kirby. So can you talk a little bit about what we do with the results of this survey? Because I think that would be helpful for me and to Councilmember Lohman's point around kind of breaking out the questions and kind of what we're looking for. It would be helpful for me to better understand kind of all of the ways that we use this information and how it impacts our work as a council, but also as a city.
Ms. Kirby.
So thank you, Councilmember Carter. That's a great question, and this is your first experience with the National Citizen Survey. So I appreciate your question about that. So the survey results are used in a variety of ways. One of the ways I can think of just right off the top of my head is our racial equity coordinator mined the survey data to find out how different groups felt about living in Bloomington. And there are significant differences when you look at certain categories of the survey with different groups in Bloomington. So that was one way. We've also used it, I know community development has used the results in a variety of ways. We've looked at parks and recreation, our recreational facilities, to see how we're ranking compared with other communities. Certainly, our public safety, and I believe Chief Potts meant a couple of weeks ago, that they do look at the survey results and how they're doing and how they're comparing too against other communities. Both our peer communities, so we have a select group of communities in Minnesota and across the country, high-performing communities, that we compare ourselves against. So 28 communities that we like to compare ourselves against, in addition to the 500-plus jurisdictions around the country that we also compare ourselves against. We also look at things like the public works areas. So street repair, we look at our street repair ratings, snow plowing. We rank very, very high in snow plowing, as well as on water quality. But I know just a variety of departments look at the data and mine it for information on how we're doing and where their improvements could be made.
And if I could add as well, Ms. Kirby, Councilmember Carter, at a higher level, as we look at strategic, our council's strategic planning, but then also the strategic plans that the different departments put together in terms of their planning for the year, a lot of the information that comes out of this survey is very helpful as we develop those plans.
Great. That is, that was actually a follow-up question. So thank you for that comment. Okay, I'm going to process a little bit more, but thank you for that.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Kirby, I do have a question. The last question that we have, that you have there, the economic impact of COVID-19. Now, I believe on the specific COVID survey that just went out, and I saw the tabulations of results, didn't we ask a very similar question? And is this, in some ways, redundant? And then feeding through, then some of the suggestions that have been made earlier, Councilmember Lohman suggesting, would that give us the room to break some of that data out in terms of the specific groups?
So Mayor, you know, that's your call in terms of a council. If you wanted to remove this question, what I will say, though, is this is a scientific sample. So this is, we would be getting random sample scientific information from this survey that we didn't get from that online poll. The online poll was anybody could take it. And so we're really getting, I would say, some very good data in terms of what the community is thinking in this particular question, if it was asked on this particular survey. The other survey, we had a great response. We had 1,026 people who responded to that survey. It wasn't a sample survey. So people were self-selected. My opinion, you're getting information here that you can say with pretty good certainty that the rest of the community is probably as the people who are selected for this random sample.
Understood. Thank you. Mr. Verbrugge, something to add?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I echo what Ms. Kirby said about the non-scientific nature of the online, which also may have some just built-in biases for digital access to members of our community, obviously, and not being a specifically random sample, which this both gets to more people and also provides that statistical significance with a valid scientific process. The other reason that we're doing this currently is frankly, we thought, understanding especially the economic impact that residents are facing this year as a result of this really unique circumstance, is one of the reasons we actually delayed the survey, was to get a little bit deeper into the pandemic so we could see if there was a lasting impact, especially as we go into our budget process for '21 and '22, as well as our strategic planning. The one thing that's missing on this list that I'd maybe like to ask the council if they're interested because it's been a primary consideration for the council over the last couple of months, has to do with housing. And so that's not recognized here either. But people that are facing a potential loss of housing as a result of the pandemic. And then Diane and I have been exchanging some ideas too about other places, not just here, within the survey where we can possibly clear some room if there's additional items within these three questions that council wants to see. So certainly appreciate the input thus far from council. And we're going to try to see what we can do within the rest of the survey body to accommodate those two.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Carter, you got a follow-up?
Thank you. So two quick questions. So are these questions that were already created and like validated, and then you kind of picked them out of a laundry list of questions that could be added to the survey? Or was there a lot more flexibility?
There is flexibility. Yes. Councilmember Carter, Mayor, there is flexibility on these questions. These are questions of our own choosing. I did work with the National Research Center, and these are questions that they've had in their database of potential questions. In fact, the two questions, 13, 14, are part of an inclusion and equity survey that they have actually online through the Poco product. So those are questions that they've, but all of these questions actually have been vetted. They've used similar sorts of questions in the past, including question 15 here. So there are questions that they have utilized before.
Awesome. Okay, so I have one specific comment on this question 15. So because we have had, because Earn Sick and Save Time has been part of a conversation that we've been having as a council, I would be interested in, and I agree with Mr. Verbrugge on the housing question. I'd be really interested in that too. But I would love to have something around trying to get at whether people or people in a household are attending Work While Sick. Something that might get at the, an issue that we may otherwise assume we know is happening, but if we could get some survey response data on, something along the lines of getting at that, Earn Sick and Save Time, I think would be really helpful.
Just clarify, Councilmember Carter, I believe you said it was attending Work While Sick. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. Something along those lines. I'm assuming that this company probably has maybe some questions that they've used that are validated and all of that maybe in their database. But really kind of getting at, you know, do our residents attending work when they're not feeling well because they cannot lose their income? Because they would then not be able to pay rent and lose the roof over their kids' heads? Like, that's kind of what I want to get at. And so again, I'm not, I don't want to wordsmith, but yep, that's the essence.
Thank you.
Any other comments or suggestions? Councilmember Lohman?
I'm just curious. I know before, we used to have a business survey, and I know there was a cost associated with that. I can't remember why we nixed that. Was it just cost, or was it just we weren't getting what we wanted? I'm just curious about that.
Ms. Kirby.
So, yes, Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, yes, we conducted that survey. We conducted that survey three times from around 2014 on. The difference with that particular survey and this particular survey is that survey was strictly an online survey. It was sent, there was a postcard sent to all businesses in Bloomington. It was sent, there was a postcard sent to all businesses in Bloomington, so it was sent approximately 8,000 businesses in Bloomington. What we found was pretty low response rate. So we were getting a response rate of anywhere between something around 10, 11% to the survey, 8 to 10%. A pretty low response rate, whereas this particular survey, we're getting more in the upper 30% response rate, which is considered a very, very good response rate for a resident survey. So low response rate, we were getting very, very similar information in terms of the, the data wasn't changing that years, and we're finding that the results really weren't varying much at all. So at this point, we had decided to hold off on conducting the National Business Survey again until we felt such time that we thought it might warrant conducting it again. But but that's my recollection on the National Business Survey and why we haven't conducted it in the last couple of years.
The only reason why I raise that now, given the circumstances, and it may be, you know, maybe the product that they're providing isn't the right one for us to kind of utilize, kind of going forward, I don't know. But I kind of wonder, given the circumstances that we find ourselves in, does it warrant us to, you know, Councilmember Carter brought up, you know, an issue that might make sense to ask some questions, you know, from a, from a business standpoint. We're also going through all of this kind of stuff that we're, you know, in terms of the COVID and how they're being impacted. So I wonder, I'm not sure if that's the tool, but maybe, you know, it makes some sense to kind of do something around that, you know, as we're doing the same thing to ask some questions around, around that. So just, just wondering if that makes some sense to staff and to the rest of my colleagues. I don't know what that looks like, but we are certainly in different times here, so. And especially as we get ready to make decisions around our budget, I wonder if that might help us to know what to, what to do. Just a thought.
Well, that kind of leads into the question that I had. Ms. Kirby, what are the next steps? What is the timeline here? How quickly is this all put together, and when will we see results?
So actually, the time is coming up pretty quick. We just are finalizing the mailing materials for the, the survey. Pre-notification postcards will be going out within the next week or two. That'll be followed the following week by the first wave of surveys, and then the following week, another wave of surveys. So we're looking at getting those surveys out by the end of July. And then that survey period will remain open through approximately the end of August. What will also happen is we'll have an online survey, not only of the people who received the postcard, who have been selected to fill out the survey, but it will also be opened up to the general public toward the end of the survey period. So anybody can fill it out. We'll be promoting that on social media and the website and getting the, the word out to people. But that particular survey, those results from that online open survey will be kept separate from the random sample scientific survey, but you'll have those, all of those results. We're looking right now in September.
Thank you. So with that in mind, obviously, it's a quick turnaround to try and match the National Citizen Survey. It would be an awfully quick turnaround, but given the cost of, I think it was, what, $18,000 or $20,000 or whatever, would it make sense later in the year to, and I know to Councilmember Lowman's point, I don't know that we'd be able to use it specifically for our budget discussions for this year, but if we get later in the year, it might be a worthwhile tool to have to see where our businesses are, are at as we get into the fourth quarter of 2020 here.
We can certainly look at that, Mayor.
If you could, I'd appreciate that.
Mayor and council, we'll, our CFO is also watching the conversation, has let me know that she's going to just pull the number for us. I don't know that we'll have it tonight, but we're certainly follow up with you later this week in your weekly report to remind you what the cost of that was. I, I think there's a lot of merit to the idea of trying to gauge the impact of our business community as well. In the circumstances, the environment has completely changed.
I would agree. I would agree. Additional comments or questions? If not, we'll send you forward and
All right, thank you.
Go to it. Thank you very much. This is
We'll keep you posted.
Please do. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move on to item 9.3, our legislative update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This evening's a relatively brief update. I gave Mr. Rudling the night off. He's, for those who are watching, Shane Rudling is our coordinator for legislative activities, our port authority administrator. Just, just a couple of quick notes. We did have a call with our delegation last week just to check in with them and see if there was anything they were hearing we should prepare for when the inevitable next special session comes along. We believe that may happen as quickly as Friday, the 10th, or possibly Monday, the 13th. But we expect that the governor is going to announce that in the next day or two, what the date for that special session is. It, it doesn't appear to us, either through things we're hearing from the legislature or the organizations that we're members of, such as the League of Minnesota Cities, or the Metro Cities, or the Municipal Legislative Commission, and also through media, it just doesn't seem like there's much agreement that's emerging if there's any negotiation that's going on behind the scenes. So not certain what to expect. Obviously, there's a lot that was left undone by the regular session's conclusion and did not get resolved within the first special session on, on the list. A tax bill, a bonding bill, now in light of the the events following the death of George Floyd, that there's probably a significant reinvestment package that's going to be discussed for the areas that were destroyed as part of the civil unrest. So there are just, and then there's police reform is on the table, criminal justice reform, a number of issues. So the fact that we're not hearing too much right now, I think, suggests that this is going to be a multi-month process. A couple of other items to note. The governor has inkled, I think, a willingness to consider a statewide face coverings policy, and we talked about that during our COVID update. So there's, there's some anticipation that he may issue a statewide order. And then the other issue that many people are very concerned about is what's going to happen with schools this fall. The governor is going to make an announcement, he has said, the week of July 27, whether they'll be sending kids, the K through 12 students back into school buildings in the fall, or under what circumstances they might be doing that. So we're still a few weeks off, but I think that's one of the more anticipated decisions that's coming. So that's all I have. Have to answer any questions to the best of my ability, if you have any.
I would agree on the school decision. That is, that's the one everybody's waiting on, I think. Council, any questions legislatively? Seeing none, let's move on. We'll move on to item 9.4, City Council Policy and Issue Update. Mr. Verbrugge, anything for us this evening?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing for Mr. Verbrugge, and I have nothing. Council, do we have anything we'd like to discuss? I think Councilmember Carter wanted to bring a few things up, and then I see Councilmember Lowman with his hand up as well. Councilmember Carter?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, I think I said enough at the beginning of the meeting, and I guess I would like to open up the discussion to the rest of the council to hear where other council members are at, if there is interest in having further or, or looking at what, what other communities are doing, and if we wanted to draft an ordinance to vote on. I don't know exactly the right, the process and the steps, given that we're not in a emergency, under an emergency, local emergency order now. But I guess, you know, I just wanted to have the conversation here, because we have not as a council.
Council, anyone like to weigh in on this? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it is an important conversation to have as a council. I'm, I'm sure like all of you, I mean, I've been getting all the emails, I've been getting the phone calls and the Facebook questions, and, you know, and we, when we see that Minneapolis has done this, that St. Paul has done this, that Edina has done this, that Rochester has done this, I, you know, I'm not, of course, someone who believes that, well, if somebody else does it, that means we have to, too. But I think it's fair to ask if other cities are looking at this, why are we not? I, you know, looking at, and Dr. Kelly mentioned this earlier, looking at the science, there, there is some ambiguity there, and I, I don't know that that ambiguity is going to be resolved anytime soon. But I don't think, I don't think we can wait on this. I think the, the nature of COVID and, and what I'm hearing from folks in our community, you know, I, I think folks are expecting us to step up and have the conversation. And I think we can, you know, we can, we can have staff put together an ordinance, and if the governor issues an executive order, then there's no need for it in the first place. But I'd like to see us move forward on having this conversation soon.
Others? Councilmember Nelson, you just took your mute off. Does that, you wanted to, you want to end? Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
I'll jump in, Mayor. Thank you. I think it's an interesting conversation that, that we should have. I'm curious as to what the process would be, if it's something we can discuss at our next study session, and then, you know, what notice requirements we have, public hearing, all of that type of stuff. You know, I, I think there's a lot of merit to it. I think it's a policy that is likely to be beneficial and is likely to have few downsides. But I also know there are varying opinions, and, you know, as we heard from Dr. Kelly, the scientific data is a little bit out right now. So this may give our, our team, our staff, a little bit of time to really pull that data for us to review and to have a good conversation about. So I guess that's a long way of asking, what, if we do this, which I think we should, what would that process look like?
Mr. Verbrugge, that was going to be my question as well. What would be the process?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I think there are two avenues to pursue this if the council wishes to consider it. One is to, again, initiate a declaration of local emergency, which would give the mayor and the council the ability to enact certain public health requirements consistent with that declaration. The second is to actually adopt an ordinance, and, you know, if you adopt an ordinance, you can certainly repeal that ordinance after that. For consideration of the ordinance, the earliest that we could do that would be July 27, using our standard process. And we can do that by making notice to the newspaper by this Wednesday, so it would appear the following week with the appropriate 10 days' notice. And if the council is interested in having us do that, we may get more clarity in the intervening period, either on the public policy aspect of it, the, the position of the governor, or additional science that may emerge over the course of the next month. So I think those are the, the two best avenues, and I'd certainly welcome the input from the city attorney if she needs to correct anything or she has other ideas.
Ms. Manderscheid, anything to add here?
Mayor and members, we can certainly look into it. We have already done some preliminary research, given the fact that those other communities began looking at it. You'll also probably remember that we have a public health authority here that's a little bit different than in other communities. So we just need to do some additional research and make sure that we have the authority that we need absent a local emergency declaration. And again, to, to what the city manager mentioned, by Friday, we might have a statewide mandate. It's, it's hard to know. So we will begin that research. We can put forward into the paper, send to the paper on Wednesday, a public hearing notice to cover us in the event we need to do that, that meeting on July 27.
So without taking a formal vote, I think we need at least four nodding heads here to move forward on this by this Wednesday, if we want to get it, if we want to start to move this forward. I'm seeing at least one, two, three, four nodding heads, I think. So I think we, if we would, if we could, direct staff by this Wednesday, get notice to the newspaper. I think if we haven't, need any, need to do any discussion, we might want to carve out time next Monday at our already full and important study session, but then look at it at our next regular meeting of the Bloomington City Council to determine whether or not we want to do this.
We can do that, Mr. Mayor.
Everybody okay with that?
Mayor, I have one clarifying question in our, in our drafting of this notice. Initially, during the conversation, I heard two different types of geography. One was a request for, or a requirement to wear masks inside city facilities. And then I also know about other requirements in other communities about wearing masks every time you're in public. Kind of depends, you know, by, by jurisdiction where they're going with that. So could, could we get a little bit of clarity on where, where this body is at with regard to the geography?
Councilmember Carter?
Yes. So my, my thinking is the the approach that I think Rochester just went today, earlier today, and that is indoor spaces that are for public use, but not necessarily public buildings, not like City of Bloomington buildings. And that's what we are getting asked about from residents.
I suppose I should also ask, I mean, if there is the desire to reinstitute a state of emergency in the city and do it along those lines? Or would we rather go through a process, a formal process, as we've kind of laid out here? I will take that as a formal process. Councilmember Lowman and Councilmember Nelson?
Well, Mayor, there's, I'm of two minds of that. You know, we're, we're getting emails that this is an urgent situation, and certainly folks feel that this is a, you know, it's a part of the emergency, and folks believe this is a way to, to mitigate death, you know, from this virus or prevent, prevent illness. And so, you know, one might then surmise that this may make some sense to, to put this back into the emergency piece of it. With that timeframe waiting all the way till the end of the month, that would be a substantial amount of time. I prefer to have the, the public comment period, so we can have some discussion, but that is a long time to wait for that public comment period. So I just want to be mindful for, we're saying that this is a, you know, it's a public emergency, and that's what's driving. And, you know, certainly, we don't have the evidence to necessarily support one or the other, certainly what we heard. But this may be considered to be a mitigating process. So I, I would, would lean us towards the, considering what we can do to make this move faster, given this, if we do believe this is a health emergency.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I would have had been raising my hand to just say that, in general, I would prefer the normal process in terms of public input and things like that. I respect the urgency part of it. I don't know if there's another option that balances those two, but I think it's important to hear from people. I mean, I, I talked to business owners that are on both sides of this argument. I can tell you from my own business, you know, if you come into our office, we require masks in our office in the public areas, and, and it, it works out pretty well. It puts employees in a little bit of an awkward conversation with clients sometimes, and I just tell them to blame me for the policy. You know, this would give an opportunity for business owners to just say, well, city requirement, and go with that, and not have to get into a conflict with a potential customer of theirs. But I also hear that there are other businesses that are concerned about this type of policy, and there's residents concerned. So I think that input into the process is, is absolutely critical from my mind. And, and, you know, with that, this is, this is actually a very difficult decision on where you want to go, and we're the right level of government to do this, and a lot of things that I think we should have a pretty good conversation about before moving this forward, but doing it quickly and urgently, I think, is important, too.
I would tend to agree with you, Councilmember Nelson, that I believe the public input is important. I believe following the process, I think, would be an important step for a variety of reasons, for the public input to see, as we've talked about, to see where this develops over the next couple of weeks, to see if it becomes moot by Friday, if the governor decides he wants to make it statewide. So I do think it So I do think it, it's a, it's an important discussion that we should have within the community. But I do think to follow that, the process that we laid out a few minutes ago, I think, is the, the direction and the way to go with this. And unless I hear otherwise, then I think that's what we'll direct staff to do. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have a meeting scheduled, I believe, a study session for the 20th?
We do. Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Nelson, that was the regularly scheduled meeting, study meeting for July. Originally, the 13th was an open date, and we have scheduled it for additional study.
I guess the reason for my question is, are study sessions and our regular meetings, since we're on WebEx right now, are not all that different? Is it possible to have a special meeting at the beginning of that, to have this conversation on the 20th? Would we be able to meet our notice requirements and move that up one week? Since we already have a meeting and everyone has the WebEx, you know, to get into it? Is that a possibility, or we already missed the deadline?
Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Nelson, it will not be able, it will not be possible to meet the publication requirements if we move it up by a week. I would say, however, that the council meetings that we have on the council calendar are all considered regular meetings. And so the only thing that prevents the council from taking action at study meetings is simply past practice and convention. I mean, it, you know, if the council wants to move to a place at some point in the future where a regular council meeting, whether we call it a study or a regular meeting, is a place where we can take action, we can certainly do that if necessary.
Good suggestion, Councilmember Nelson, but I was thinking the same thing that we were short on notification requirements. So as I said, I think if we could move forward with, as we discussed, make sure the publication gets out there.
We'll get the wheels in motion.
Put the wheels in motion. All right. Moving on, I saw Councilmember Loman and then Councilmember Beloga with their hands up with items for item nine point four, our city council policy and issue update. Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things here that I wanted to cover quickly. Wanted to thank the staff for following up with me quickly on the 106th Street. And I will be in touch with you yet this week regarding some additional information that I wanted to cover with you. Mayor, I know I've brought this up several times. Want to again bring it up around our public comment period. I know our public comment period, I had attended a national conference, and kind of the process that we have here, that model is based in a 1960s model, from my understanding of terms of how we do that public comment. I would really like to urge this council to really consider looking at that process by which that we, that we follow, and whether or not it kind of meets our standards around our, you know, really around our, our idea of equity and inclusion, and now our new pillar of transparency and openness. So I'd like to urge our, our council to really have a better look at that, that process going forward.
Councilmember Loman, if I could chime in there? I believe on our study meeting on the 20th, I just asked Mr. Verbrugge, and we can put our rules or procedure, I think we were going to have a discussion generally on rules or procedure, but we could definitely make this part of that discussion as well. And I think that's a good idea.
Thank you, Mayor. One other item, too, Mayor, I know that you've talked about in the past. I know we've, we've been in different times and that kind of thing. It's been really difficult to try to meet and do certainly a lot of our items. I know that Councilmember Coulter brought this up during our last meeting. But I really want to urge the rest of our council, you know, and the manager, to maybe consider having a joint school board meeting. I know we had talked about having a joint school board meeting along with other groups, too. And I'm not saying that that isn't something we should do. But I just think there's, during this unique point in time, there are some, some critical circumstances and shared, unique opportunities that these two deliberative bodies have, that I think we could benefit from having some discussions and possibly even some joint statements, as we've done in the past. So just want to throw that out, you know, to kind of push that forward. Another item that I wanted to cover is with one of, someone who has spoke earlier in our public comment period, this Terry McConnell has asked, had asked me back a comment I had made on 516, whether or not I had received any information regarding the ranked choice voting. I had requested information on the process in other states on how the results are tabulated and for how to achieve over 50%. And I don't have that data, and I'm wondering, how do I get that data? I'm being requested by, by him and a couple of other people, you know, based on those minutes to get that information. So I just want to get some clarity and how I can, you know, get that data or that information over to him. I don't have it. He's asking me for that, and I've got some other people are asking because they'd like to know about that. I know it was raised during one of our meetings by former Councilmember Steve Alkins and our current legislator, and I just would like to get that information for him, if I, if I can do that. And I'm just not sure where to go to get that information, to make that response. And then, finally, Mayor, I wanted to just make a statement on it, on an issue that I was sent via email. Previous Bloomington city councils that have, I have observed over the years, would address issues that came up for review when actual policy proposals related to the city of Bloomington were present, presented, and they would make decisions on them during council meetings. Two weeks ago, I received an email requesting that I respond as to whether I would support defunding the Bloomington Police Department. Yes or no? I am unaware of any policy proposals that have been presented to the council to defund the Bloomington Police Department. I will make my decision when and if there is a policy related to the Bloomington Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Loman. And I saw Mr. Verbrugge here jotting down notes, and I'm sure the answers to your earlier questions will, he'll have them for you as soon as he possibly can.
Mr. Mayor and council members, actually, Councilmember Loman, the one comment I did want to make, the, I know there's, there's a desire to get joint meetings going again in the community because we've been talking about this all year, and this present circumstance makes it really difficult, except to say that the community partners meeting we've been having during the pandemic period, we have begun to have this conversation about how we, we do convene the groups together again. We've also gone from a weekly meeting, we're going to be meeting on a biweekly basis. And we're also going to be less focused just on issues related to the pandemic and the impacts in the community. But also, starting to have a deeper conversation about racial equity and the issues that have presented themselves in the last couple of months, which are equally urgent, I believe. So we're going to, we're going to try to figure out a way to have some sort of joint meetings here, even if we have to do them electronically sometime in the near future because they're just urgent matters in the community that we need to discuss.
Would agree with that. Thank you. Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two quick items. One is just to acknowledge that Mr. Terry McEnroy has sent an email to all of us, where he acknowledges receipt of emails from all of us. So I think that issue is somewhat resolved. They were in spam boxes. The second one is, and it's a question for the manager. We have a agenda item potentially coming up on July 27, which is a regular council on the 2021 budget and levy. And then another study session on 831. But otherwise, I do not see any indication that we are having any budget presentations to the council. Is that a correct reading? And our process normally, which is started much earlier, this is a different year because of COVID. And I fully understand that, but want to set some expectations of what we will see, when we will see it, and what is expected of council decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Beloga. We're still working out the, the calendar for when we'll be bringing budget items to the council for conversation. We have the July one scheduled specifically as sort of that introductory conversation. We have the late August discussion set to specifically talk about preliminary levy that we have to set in, in September. And then we're going to try to figure out when else to be bringing other items. One of the things I'm hoping for is that the additional information that council is going to be seeing on a nearly weekly basis from the Budget Advisory Committee packets and material is providing at least a flow of information in the absence of some conversation right now, while we're still trying to figure out the process that we're going to be bringing to council. I would say those aren't going to be the only two conversations that we have. Councilmember Beloga, I would expect to get much deeper into the budget discussions in September as the material starts to crystallize for us here.
Well, it's, it is a different process, but it's going to be a different. One is, I don't feel that we can put all the onus on the project committee there to give us thoughts, ideas, recommendations. And we will need to have some thorough discussion on all of those. And if we get those at August 31st, at the same time, we're going to be reviewing preliminary budgets and preliminary levies. It really is a pressed agenda. And I'm going to really state that between the 27th of July and the 31st of August, we're going to need to have some time to discuss that. Because I'm not sure, but based upon prior councils, the preliminary levy generally is a better informed process than what it appears we have this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. I will point out also that I think this is the first of nine straight Mondays where we're going to be together. So I don't think we have another Monday off till Labor Day. So we will have time, I think, to have that discussion, Councilmember Beloga. I hope we certainly do. Additional items? Seeing none, I would engage or entertain a motion to adjourn.
So hold.
Second.
And a motion by Beloga and a second by Loman to adjourn. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussi?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you all very much. Have a good rest of your week. I'll see at least a couple of you tomorrow at the Port Authority meeting. And thanks much. Have a good week, guys.